Good morning, good morning. Mananas Azus, Bebat Zamoru. Thank you everyone for being here this morning. This public hearing is being held by the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, Federal and Foreign Affairs. It's called to order. The GIAA had asked for a five-minute recess to give time for more folks to come in here. They're on their way down here. So that being said, we'll grant that request. So we'll take a five-minute recess before we start these public hearings. So we're in five-minute recess. Good morning again, Mananas Azus. The Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, Federal and Foreign Affairs is back from recess. Good morning again, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for being here. Today, we will hear testimony on Bill 67-38-COR sponsored by myself, Senator Lujan, co-sponsored by Senators Duennius, Ada, Barnes, Borja, Blas, Matanani, Parkinson, San Agustin, and Guma Tautau. An act to repeal and reenact subsection 120301 of Article 2, Title 12 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing authority to the Antonio B. Wampa International Airport Authority, Guam to adopt policies and procedures for the solicitation, selection, and awards of agreements between the authority and any other party for the use of the airport facilities and properties for airport purposes and/or visitor-related activities. Alongside that, Bill Number 30-38-COR sponsored by Senator Sabina Flores Perez and co-sponsored by Senators Ada, Barnett, Calvo, Matanani, Tai De Guey, and Terlahi. An act to add a new Article 11 to Chapter 51A of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated and to add a new Section 14104P to Chapter 14 of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the Guam Solid Waste Authority Islandwide Collection Plan. In that order, at this time, I would like to welcome my colleagues who are joining here this morning, my co-chair and office mate, of course, Senator Duennius, Senator Chris Duennius, thank you for joining us. Senator Sabina Perez, thank you for joining us. Senator Sean Guma Tautau, thank you for joining us. And Senator Tai De Guey, thank you for joining us this morning as well. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of the Asitun in Guam's general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chairperson before speaking and shall state their full name for the record. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of today's agenda. Personal inferences to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. Pursuant to section 1107 of the 38th Guam Legislative Standing Rules, a chairperson may order the removal from a hearing of the committee or subcommittee of any person who is not a member of the Asitun in Guam who fails to observe proper decorum. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in immediate removal from this public hearing. And we will now proceed to hear, of course, testimony on Bill 67-38-COR. And because I am the bill's author, I'll begin with my opening statement. Good morning again, people of Guam and my colleagues. Today, we are talking about solutions, not more government spending, not empty promises, but real solutions that would drive economic growth. Bill Number 67-38-COR is the first revenue-generating bill to be heard in this term. And I am proud to bring it to you forward. Because it's an honest, Guam cannot afford to sit back and wait for economic recovery to magically happen. We need bold decision action. We need policies that put our assets to work and create new streams of revenue. And that's exactly what this bill does. The Antonio B. Wampa International Airport Authority is not just a hub for travel, it's an economic engine. Every plane that lands, every passenger that walks through the gates, every business that operates within its facilities contribute to our economy. But for too long, we have limited its abilities to fully capitalize on its potential. This bill changes that. It gives the airport the flexibility and the authority to forge strategic partnerships, attract new businesses, and maximize the use of its property, not just for aviation, but for visitor-related activities that will bring in real dollars and real opportunities for the people of Guam. This is the kind of legislation that defines leadership. We are not here to manage decline. We are here to build. We are here to grow, and we are here to make sure that our economy is not just surviving, but ensures that it returns and it's thriving. So let's put back our island, back on the path of economic strength. With that, thank you. And I'm going to, we've got seven pages full of actually people who have signed up, but it looks like, let me call out the ones that have signed up to give oral testimony alongside their written testimony. Former Senator John Kinata, let me call you up there, please. Brian Bamba. Regine Bisco Lee. Is this you, Vic? I think this is you, Vic, right? I can't make out this name here. I'm guessing it's you.
I think, Mr. Chair, what we'll do is we have our two, our chairman and then myself, and then we'll have our management team come up for questions and answers.
Akimo Tan? Oh, yes, please, go on first, yeah, okay. I can't make this name out. Okay, we'll go with this and then, okay. Again, please state your, actually, let me, yeah. Let me go ahead and read the bill before we start, okay? Bill 67-38-COR, an act to repeal and reenact, section 120301 of Article 2, Title 12 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing authority to the Antonio B. Wampa International Airport Authority to adopt policies and procedures for the solicitation, selection, and award of agreements between the authority and any other party for the use of airport facilities and properties for the airport purposes and/or visitor-related activities. As it lays findings, the Asitun finds that the A.B. Wampa Guam International Authority, Guam GIAA, is the only commercial service airport and contributes substantially to the economic health and welfare of Guam's economy. GIAA plays an important role in the local, regional, and international air transportation system as the largest airport in Micronesia and is vital for the continued recovery of tourism industry in Guam. As the Asitun in Guam further finds that allowing the GIAA to expand and diversify its revenue stream is fundamental to its ability to continue to operate a safe, secure, and efficient commercial airport in Guam, its residents and visitors. And that one of the largest non-aeronautical revenue streams any operator generates is from its concession agreements, which also provides vital business and customer-focused service for the traveling public. In consideration of the GIAA's mandate to be self-sustaining, the Asitun in Guam further finds that providing GIAA a sufficient or efficient ability to establish processes for the solicitation, selection, and award of agreements between the authority and any other party for the use of airport property, facilities, and properties for airport purposes and/or visitor-related activities will provide the best opportunity to achieve continued financial growth and stability through revenue expansion and diversification to further solidify the GIAA's financial position and to ensure the GIAA's ability to keep up with industry standards, best practices, and changing market conditions so that it continues to provide the vital commercial airport services to the traveling public. And section 2, of course, section 1203.1, Article 2, Chapter 1, Title 12 of the Guam Code Annotated, is hereby repealed and reenacted to read and will read. "The agreements between the authority and other parties agreeing between the authority and airlines, A, notwithstanding any other provision of law, including without limitation, 5GCA Chapter 5, Subsection 5127 on Chapter 9, and 21GCA Subsections 60112, 60114, and 60115. Any agreement between the authority and any other party of the use of airport facilities and properties for airport purposes and/or visitor-related activities shall conform to the following. One, with regard to concession agreements, shall be authorized for a term up to 15 years and shall be subject to policies and procedures for the solicitation, selection, and award of concession agreements adopted from time to time by the GIAA's Board of Directors. Concessions include, but are not limited to, retail, specialty retail, food and beverage, advertising, currency exchange, car rentals, and parking. And two, with regard to all other contracts for the use of airport facilities and properties, shall be authorized for a term up to 50, five zero years, and shall be subject to applicable federal aviation administration requirements for aeronautical and non-aeronautical uses to include rates charged for non-aeronautical uses at fair market value pursuant to FAA regulations and policies and procedures adopted from time to time by the GIAA's Board of Directors. Three, shall be subject to applicable federal laws and regulations. And four, shall be subject to the authority's bond covenants. B, any agreement between the authority and any airline offering service to Guam shall charge the airline using the Antonio B. Wampa International Guam International Airport International Air Terminal facilities rates sufficient to cover the operating expenses of the air terminal and debt service coverage of the bonds authorized to be issued by this section and be in the compliance with the requirement that no one or more airlines shall be unreasonably discriminated against in comparison with any other similarly situated airline in these charges." And that being said, we can hear your testimony now. We'll begin with, of course, the chairman of the board, Mr. Brian Bamba. Thank you and welcome this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Buenos dias, Chairman Senator Lujan and members of the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, and Federal and Foreign Affairs. My name is Brian Bamba, chairman of the Board of Directors of the Antonio B. Wampa Guam International Airport Authority, or GIAA. On behalf of the GIAA Board of Directors, thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of Bill 67-38. I'd especially like to thank you all for taking the time to engage GIAA management and staff to tour our facilities and learn the business of Guam's only commercial airport. As you have found, our airport is indeed a critical component of our livelihood and essential to all economic activity within our region. At GIAA, our goal is to strive for continuous improvement. You may have noticed the ongoing work, effort to upgrade airport, airport and infrastructure, repair damages in and out of the terminal, and to bring our facilities to standards that exceed traveler expectations. Notwithstanding the challenges we face with Guam's tourism recovery, Bill 67-38 seeks to provide the GIAA with tools necessary to improve its commercial relationships with airlines, tenants, operators, and potential investors seeking opportunities at the airport. It is imperative that we seek revenue enhancement and diversification to improve operating metrics and mitigate the impact of reduced passenger traffic we currently face. Agreements with airlines, concessionaires, and developers are the bedrock on which airport finances are built. While aeronautical revenue is our most important revenue stream, GIAA must explore other non-aeronautical revenue to provide more cost-efficient operations. The formula in simplicity aims to grow revenues, which create cost efficiency, attracting aeronautical and non-aeronautical investors, innovative entrepreneurs, and concessionaires, ultimately improving the customer experience at the airport. Under current law, the five-year term limits constrain potential large-scale investments, further limiting the economic opportunities from which the community may benefit. More investments, new industries, more jobs, and improved quality of life. Bill 67-38 aligns with current industry business models around the world, all of which have adapted following the COVID-19 pandemic. Attracting air service and investors in airport facilities is very competitive on all fronts, while the cost of doing business and financial feasibility weigh heavily on investor consideration. Bill 67-38 creates opportunities to reduce financial risk borne by airlines, investors, and concessionaires, and provides the cash flow to meet the airport's debt obligations. I assure you that the GIA board is committed to full transparency and stakeholder involvement in the development of policies and procedures as we seek to attract new investments, creating job opportunities for our community, and diversifying our economy. In closing, we thank this committee and strongly support Bill 67-38. The benefits are clear: economic growth, creation of new industries and jobs, increased investment in infrastructure, and the ability for our airport to effectively plan and implement projects that will greatly benefit the public and the economy for decades to come. Thank you for the introduction of Bill 67-38, and we look forward to your continued support throughout the process. Sincerely, Brian Bamba, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Bamba. Before we proceed, can we have also Ricky Hernández, can we come up here? Sorry, I missed you. And Baltazar, italic? Yeah, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So, Senator?
Thank you, and good morning. My name is John M. Kinata. I'm the executive manager for the Guam International Airport Authority. Hafaday, and good morning, Senator Jesse Anderson Lujan, our vice chair, Senator Chris Duennius, Senator Sean Guma Tautau, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Tai De Guey, and members of the Committee on the Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, and Federal and Foreign Affairs. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this testimony on Bill Number 67-38-COR. On behalf of the Antonio B. Wampa International Airport Authority Guam and the airport community, we first want to thank you, Senator Lujan, and the co-sponsors of this proposed legislation: Senator Duennius, Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Barnes, Anne Bora, Senator Speaker Blas, Senator Salas Matanani, Parkinson, San Agustin, and Guma Tautau, as well as Senator Shelly Calvo. That recognizes the importance of Guam's only commercial service airport and the need for diversifying our revenues while adding and improving upon the service offerings for our passengers and airport users. As you are well aware of, the tourism industry continues to be challenged, and recovery is a work in progress, which we all are working together, both government and private sector, and to improve on that. Similar to how this situation has been impacting our private sector partners, so too is the Guam International Airport being financially affected. GIAA is in full support of Bill 67-38. GIAA is a public corporation and an autonomous instrumentality of the government of Guam that has operated for nearly 50 years as the only civilian airport with the purpose of operating and maintaining its properties and facilities for civil aviation purposes on Guam. GIAA's mission is to ensure that the safety and security of the traveling public maintains a superior and reliable level of airport services and support the development of air services and facilities which are integral to the island's economic growth. As you may be all aware of, the GIA is mandated by both local and federal statutes and functions under the common principle that airports operate as financially self-sustaining enterprise and is required to generate its own revenue through operating fees paid by signatory airlines, tenants, passengers, and users of the airport facilities and services to pay for the cost of operating and maintaining the airport. Bill 67-38 improves the GIA's ability to generate additional aeronautical and non-aeronautical revenues, which is paramount to the continued recovery and success of GIAA. Bill 67-38 authorizes the GIA to lease airport facilities and properties for a period of up to 50 years, with concessions limited to a period of up to 15 years. I believe GIAA's position has been well documented that a longer lease period, especially when capital improvement and long-term investment is needed, would allow entities the ability to recover their investment while remaining financially sustainable throughout the period of its commitment under the lease. Similar to Public Law 35114, which authorized the University of Guam to contract and lease property for an increased term up to 30 years, the GIA seeks similar authority to increase ability to generate aeronautical and non-aeronautical revenues and to achieve the much-needed flexibility to spur economic development at the airport. As a comparison, seen in my Public Law 20-84, increase the terms of public land leases for up to 40 years, plus an extension of 15 years for a total of 55 years. The flexibility of being able to lease airport facilities and properties for a period of up to 50 years provides the GIA the most leverage and flexibility to navigate and negotiate with interested entities, especially those that may be willing to invest over $100 million into capital projects such as hangars, fixed base operations, maintenance, repair, and overhaul MRO facilities, cargo and warehousing facilities, in-flight catering facilities, and other aeronautical and non-aeronautical operations. As it relates to the concessions, the GIA believes that a period of up to 15 years would be advantageous for our ability to track and negotiate for the for the different types of concession arrangements that would be in the best interest of GIAA and its passengers and airport users, especially considering the rising construction costs that may be an impediment to this changing industry. I note that GIA operates in a highly regulated environment, including the process of contracting and leasing airport facilities and properties. As a recipient of the Federal Aviation Administration's Financial Assistance Programs, GIAA is a federally obligated airport and must agree to certain obligations and assurances, and that's under the FAA Airport Sponsors' Assurances 5-2022. The GIA must comply with such assurances as it relates to the development, leasing and operations of airport land and buildings. First and foremost, aeronautical activities are determined to be a priority for the use of airport facilities and properties. As an example, Assurance 38, relative to hangar constructions by an aircraft owner at his or her expense, it states that the airport owner or operator will grant to the aircraft owner for the hangar a long-term lease that is subject to such terms and conditions on the hangar as the airport owner or operator may impose. The FAA's Airport Compliance Manual does emphasize that the lease term reasonably allows for the amortization of tenant's investment or financing and provides a reasonable return for the tenant's development of major facilities. With federal regulations and requirements already in place relative to airport facilities and properties, Bill 67-38 provides an avenue for increased development and investment in airport properties, thereby diversifying airport revenues and expanding economic activities in Guam and in the region. The development of an investment in airport facilities and properties and the ability for GIA to obtain its highest and best use of property will also contribute to the promotion of aviation and other industries and create additional jobs for our island. Mr. Chairman and Senators, it was just in December 12th last year that we dedicated the Tezen Business Park as the David D. Tuncap Aviation Business Park on behalf of GIA's first executive manager, who had a vision of aviation development that would spur economic growth and sustainability for not only the GIA but for Guam. With these extended lease provisions, we believe we will have a better opportunity to achieve that vision. Bill 67-38 also authorizes the GIA Board of Directors to adopt policies and procedures for the solicitation, selection and award of concession agreements. Current Guam law requires any policy or procedures to be in accordance with General Services Agencies Regulation. Given that the concession agreements are revenue generating, Bill 67-38 is necessary to address this conflict. Additionally, current Guam law requires that only competitive sealed bid solicitation method is authorized, which restricts the industry standard request for proposal, solicitation method to be utilized. Bill 67-38 also addresses this as well. Public Law 37-23 authorized GIA to negotiate extension of up to three years for all our current concessions. That three-year period expires next year for many of our concessions and time is of the essence to not only adopt these policies and procedures, but to also solicit, select and award concessions throughout the airport as well as work with those concessionaires with expected capital improvements where applicable. I want to make it very clear that GIA intends to ensure that there is adequate public comment period of no less than 30 days and intends on fully engaging the public, airport stakeholders and industry experts in this effort before policies and procedures are brought to publicly noticed meetings of the GIA Board of Directors for their review and approval. Chairman Lohan and Honorable Senators, now is a critical time in our history of Guam's only commercial airport. As we continue our recovery efforts, we must ensure that we do not lose momentum and that we also prepare for the future economic potential for Guam. Bill 67-38 provides a pathway to achieve that economic potential for Guam. I also want to add that the FAA has reviewed Bill 67-38 and has no objection to the proposed measures as it generally promotes the airport to be self-sustaining. I have enclosed a copy of their letter with this testimony. And additionally, United Airlines, Guam's hometown carrier, has also asked us to convey their support of increasing the five-year limit on contract terms to align with aviation industry standards to promote airport development and provide the GIA the necessary tools to operate a cost-competitive top-tier facility that the Guam community deserves. They had mentioned this and they will be submitting written testimony to this effect soon. Once again, on behalf of the GIA, we thank you for this opportunity to testify and we look forward to working with this committee to advance policies in support of continued airport development. Thank you. Sincerely, John M. Knatsa, Airport Executive Manager.
Thank you very much, Senator. I'd like to also welcome Senator Theresa Karla. Thank you very much for being here. And before we, Senator Lee, before we start with you, Dr. Jones, if you want to come up to the desk here? I understand you want to give oral testimony as well. Yes, thank you very much. Senator Lee, please.
Suzuus Maasi, Mr. Chair. Hafaday, Honorable Chairman Lohan, Vice Chairman Duñez, Senators Gumatauto, Perez, Taijigui and Terlahi, Honorable Committee Members, Airport Authority Directors and Management and all of those among us who you so capably serve. Buenos dias, my name is Rajin Bisco Lee. I serve as President and CEO of the Guam Visitors Bureau. Biba Meszczomorud and Suzuus Maasi for welcoming me to speak on behalf of GBB's staff and management. We are in full support of the passage of Bill 67-38 COR for the benefit of the AB Wampat International Airport, the Guam International Airport Authority, air service partners, concessionaires, passengers and employees. In its present form, Bill 67 has been introduced to help Guam's only commercial airport secure the types of long-term partnerships that will benefit its operations, its air carriers and vendors, its informed, experienced and hard-working employees and those departing and arriving from its gates. It has come to our attention that aviation-related businesses and in-terminal retailers who would commit substantial financial resources into lease-hold improvements and operations at the airport often require long-term lease agreements to help ensure an acceptable return on these critical investments. In the economic recovery period following the pandemic and the aftermath of Typhoon Mawar, with the looming threat of a returning bird flu and through the winds of austerity threatening to blow through Guam's federal programs, each of us is reminded of the critical need to think and plan ahead for every eventuality. Our only commercial airport is no exception to this rule. This forward-looking legislation seeks to extend the airport's allowable lease lengths from five to as many as 15 years for retail, specialty retail, food and beverage, advertising, currency exchange, car rentals and parking. It further seeks to grant GIAA the agency to negotiate terms of up to 50 years for all other contracts at airport facilities and properties in compliance with applicable Federal Aviation Administration requirements. Affording GIAA the leeway to negotiate substantially longer leases will expand the pool of interested bidders, open an impressive list of new options for airport development and strengthen the creditworthiness of a professionally managed airport that already enjoys the capital improvement benefits of the investment-grade revenue bonds on its balance sheet. We appeal to you to take immediate action and support the following two specific items. Number one, authorize GIAA to lease airport properties for up to 50 years and concessions for up to 15. Currently, the five-year lease limitation and the uncertain process for leases longer than the five years have stifled interest. Lengthening allowable lease periods to the terms specified could lead to potential interest in hangar developments, aircraft maintenance, repair and overhaul MRO facilities, plus freight terminals, bonded warehouses, logistical hubs and air cargo distribution facilities. We're talking about the kinds of major infrastructural improvements that typically attract upwards of nine-digit investments. Such flexibility will allow the much-needed streamlining of freight transportation, storage and distribution. This will ease the flow of products and commodities through the Western Pacific after years of supply chain disruption triggered by the pandemic. It will also help to relieve choke points and open alternate routes for last-step manufacturing, packaging and rerouting in a defense buildup area that will require increasing logistical fluidity. And it all goes without saying that new competition in the broad field of commercial aviation will only contribute to job growth. Inside the terminal, where foot traffic is heaviest, 15-year leases will attract the types of concessionaires who will be willing to pour more resources into the attraction power of their retail stores and kiosks. Number two, authorize GIAA to promulgate policies and procedures for the solicitation, selection and award of the concession agreements. Currently, the GIAA is unable to issue competitive solicitations for concession agreements. Authorizing the GIAA Board to adopt such policies and procedures will advance their concession program to include food and beverage, retail, car rental, advertising, credit lounges, newsstands, convenience stores, souvenir shops and many other businesses. With the GIAA Board empowered to adopt the necessary policies and procedures, GIAA will be able to issue competitive solicitations, including RFPs and IFBs for concessions. This solicitation process should be competitive and aligned with industry standards. With your approval, the adoption of the aforementioned policies and procedures will help to ensure that it is. For all of these reasons and more, Mr. Chair, the GBB supports the passage of Bill 76. We thank you, Chairman Lohan and all the bill's co-sponsors for your leadership. And with that, and Doug Luna Suzuus Maasi for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Biscoli. Mr. Tan, before I go to you, I forgot to call up Dr. Hernandez, who's the Assistant General Manager. So if I can go to him first and I'll go after you. Okay? Dr. Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Senators of the Committee. My name is Ricky Hernandez, Deputy Executive Manager for the GIA. Just wanted to express my support and here to provide any answers that might be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tan?
Hafaday, good morning. My name is Aki Hiro Tani. I'm managing Fish and Marine Park. And also, we do have a small food counter inside the airport. Their name is Tentekomai. We've been providing Japanese noodle since 1997. If I'm not mistaken, when we started that concession area, the lease term was a little longer, so it motivated us to invest our money. Currently, so that lease term is very limited and it's very difficult for small businesses to invest money or taking this opportunity. We already have a food counter over there, which we can maintain. However, so we have a big good opportunity for investor who can invest money if lease term is longer. I really support these changes. So Guam Airport need more financial variety of financial resource besides federal grant. And we make it to more sustainable, so we have a better opportunity. From tourist perspective, unfortunately, our facility, airport, it doesn't match with expectation. Contrary to all of GIA management, they do their best. However, financial resource is very limited. Our service level, it doesn't match with, I don't think it matches with international expectation. With these changes to attract new investment, maybe we can bring a lot of new concept to airport. From tourist side, one of the examples is like a lot of air flight, LCC, it arriving in convenient time. Two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock. So you might see a lot of rent-a-car parking at Kmart or other location because tourist doesn't want to spend money for only three hours or four hours of stay at night. So they rent a car, put suitcase, go to Kmart parking lot and stay until nine o'clock. And then when Fish and Marine Park open, they drive down to Fish and visiting over the battery, which is good for us. However, it's very difficult for tourist. Waiting until three o'clock in afternoon and then check in the hotel. There are so many new invention just for small capsule. So having bed and the shower and then so customer can stay on that airport if we create those facility hourly basis, right? So that reduce tourist stress. Currently, Guam tourism has very difficult time. So as one of our partner company, we have been very busy, difficult time. It takes time, it takes effort to work as Team Guam. So fortunately, GBB start new management and also we do have GIA start changing. I think we can collaborate and making Team Guam and creating more better swift recovery. Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tan. Mr. Italic?
Buenos dias, Chairman and Majority Leader Senator Lohan, Vice Chair Chris Duñez, Senator Salas Matanani, Senator Gumatauto, Senator Parkinson, Senator Flores Perez, Senator Terlahi and Senator Taijigui. We did submit a written testimony and so I would just, I represent, first of all, Asia-Pacific Airlines, who's been operating here in Guam since 1998 and we've been operating out of the AB Wampat International Airport. I will just read an excerpt of the letter from the President of Asia-Pacific Airlines. Quote, "By passing this bill, companies would feel encouraged to confidently commit resources improving airport facilities, ensuring their investments contribute to sustainable growth for decades. I encourage your support for this bill to foster longevity in the aviation industry of Guam." End of quote. With that said, Asia-Pacific Airlines started in 1998 with one 727 aircraft, cargo freight aircraft. Today, we have six 757 aircraft for an operation, one currently in modification certification and one that will go into conversion in June. All of this work is being done off-site, out of the island. It is not because we do not have the talent. We have the talent. We support all these modifications conversions with our current talent here in Guam. However, because we do not have the facility to do these kind of work, we take our aircraft elsewhere. And aside from, we do not save money because of manpower rate because it's just expensive to pay these manpower rate in Asia as in the US. But it's, and it's not because we don't have the talent, it's just we don't have the facility. By passing this bill would bring these type of work back to the island. And I'm a very strong supporter, along with our President, to bring these work back to Guam because we do see the need of increasing our employments here as well because we have so much talents here in the island. And so by passing this bill, we'll just elevate and dominate ourselves here in the island in the aviation industry. in the aviation industry. And so thank you again on behalf of Asia-Pacific Airlines. We look forward to investing, and it brings music to my ears when we talk about MROs, we talk about hangar facilities, we talk about job growth. We are just so excited for it, and I think this brings that into perspective. We do have the high caliber of the board of the airport, we have the high caliber of the management of the airports, the staff of the airport, so I think this bill will be well cared for. And then if I may, I could, if I may switch my head, as Chair of Business and Technology Charter School, first of all, I want to thank everybody here for the support of education and support of the charter school. We currently have an aviation program, one of the fewest programs in the country that actually helps kids become pilots or become aircraft mechanics. We have 21 students currently in that program. With the partnership of ID Aviation Services, we're able to get our students into these into these program and save a lot of money instead of going off-island to try to get their private license, we could actually, we're doing that here today. And so with the passage of this bill, we'll see us in the future as as this program starts to expand to again increase our footprint in in the aviation industry. So thank you Danklun Asudzus Maasi for having me speak today in support of this bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hatalik. I'd like to also welcome Senator Mathenani, thank you for being here, Senator Parkinson, and also, oh, Senator Dana Barnes, thank you for being here as well. Thank you. Dr. Jones, please.
Thank you, and thank you all. I speak on behalf of the students that I see, the many students that I see that are in a workforce pipeline, that see aviation as a career. And I do so not just as a member of the faculty of the University of Guam, but as an avid spectator of the rise of the aviation work industry here and the interest of our future. I want to thank Zar for the handoff to this topic of education. I am a member of the BTAC's Board, and we met yesterday. We at the university and in the Trades Academy and with our services are preparing students for not only futures as aviators, but also mechanics, engineers. We work with also the Civil Air Patrol at high schools. There is a huge pipeline that is waiting to fulfill the the future of the workforce need here. Many of the existing jobs that are held are soon to retire out, and so we look to our next generation that are very enthusiastic about filling those positions. Now, here's the issue. The issue is, they work on the general aviation side of GIAA, and if you ever have had a chance to tour that facility, it is full of energy, full of enthusiasm, hope, optimism, hard work, dedication of a lot of people, and especially a lot of young people. It is inspiring. I encourage you to go see it. When you do, you will see that they are working under the hot sun, under tarps, to fix aircraft. The facilities are woefully out of date. And yet, that aspiration that they have for a love of aviation and a future that is a well-paying future drives them to continue. That is what has brought me here today, that inspiration of these young people to use my voice to say, see what they're doing. I am aware that there is a plan for the development of the general aviation side of the airport, and it is a well-developed and designed plan, and it's quite, its existence has been many years. At the university side, I've put together with a team of very talented people, all dedicated to how do we raise funding to support the future of workforce development. We have applied for an FAA workforce development grant. We hope to be competitive, it's a highly competitive grant, and we hope to hear positively from them, if not this year, in July, a future year. We are committed to getting the funding to support our students at all levels to to follow these paths. Our biggest problem is, while we dream and we we work toward that future, one of the things that we're up against is the facilities in which they will work. And we look to various private markets, we know there's private investors, and when we see that there are no takers for the construction of the facilities that we need in partnership, we ask why. And time and time again, the answer has been, we're willing to invest the money, it's just the years of ownership or partnership, only at five years, makes that not feasible. And so the private market is silent. The need is there. With this bill that you proposed and which I support, it opens up that opportunity for those private markets to meet the needs and interests of our students, to give them the facilities that are top rate for their futures, and we can do this together. And I'm here to answer any other questions you might have on the education side. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jones. Jones, is there anybody else I wanted to give oral testimony that I missed? Okay, before we start the question, let me just read the, we got written testimony, of course, by GIAA, Asia-Pacific, ITNE, JMC Guam Inc., Lotte Guam Duty Free, Pacific Unlimited, Casey Castro Air Services, and of course, Business and Technology School that submitted testimony, and I'm sure most, quite a few more will be coming in. So now we're gonna, we'll go to, we asked the panel, the committee members to, for their questions, and we'll first go to, of course, my Vice Chair, Senator Duñez. We have the five-minute, five-minute rule, Senators, and the clock is right there on the table. Thank you.
Asudzus Maasi, Mr. Chairman, and it is truly a great day to see the excitement and all of the wonderful people here that support the airport in so many different avenues. You know, we see the Chief of Fire, we got Chief Police. I think there's a general sense and an understanding that the airport needs to move beyond what its current capabilities are, to support every aspect of what the airport does. So with that, I would like to ask the Chairman and as well as the General Manager to please speak to the people of Guam, that this is not a pie-in-the-sky idea, this is not something that's not well thought out, and that you have interests ready to hit the ground as soon as this bill passes. Can you share that with us?
From from my experience and from my discussions with a lot of the businesses and people that want to invest, yes, Senator, once this thing is passed, we're going to see the interest come back in. For example, we do have a, we call it Shinhan Card. These are the major credit card of Korea. And and what they want to do is they want to build a a club similar to United Club, but offering it to folks that are Shinhan Card holders, where that when they come into the airport, they have a facility to go to, to go and enjoy before they depart. And so those guys were ready to come in, there's already space available for them that once this bill passes, that they can be able to come in and do that investment. We do have airlines that are waiting to see this law pass, that there there's the possibility of bringing in the maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility to the island, that will provide jobs, that will provide opportunities for kids that are in high school to to go into the aviation industry as aircraft mechanics or possibly pilots. So there's plenty, lots of opportunities. We have the, we have the food and beverage folks, they want to go in and and provide that opportunity to, all over the airport, that they want to do that. But yes, we do have that, those interests.
Thank you, Senator. If I may add, without divulging specifics, obviously, there are confidentially proprietary information, but in addition to what the executive managers stated, there are a lot of things occurring today, and we've seen this post-pandemic, actually during COVID, where while there were no passenger airlines flying, the International Airport saw probably the most cargo operations that it's seen in history. And what we found was, you know, the the ability for the airport to service long-haul cargo operations, and at the time of COVID, there was repatriation of State Department folks in Asia, as well as the movement of goods and services, products such as PPE for, you know, for the industry. But, you know, in noticing that that activity was, we were capable of providing that, you know, we challenged management to explore, you know, what were, why were they coming? And it wasn't just to get fuel and do tech stops, but, you know, it was the ability for us to leverage the runway lengths, the assets that the airport has whereby the, you know, owned by the government. And so those kind of opportunities present themselves today. You see a lot of the activity that's occurring with the new administration, you know, with the tariffs and some of the, it's affecting supply chains and manufacturing locations. It presents opportunities for our airport to be servicing last mile logistics and to establish free trade using the airport's assets, basically its property, to develop warehousing, logistics, distribution industries. And so I think, you know, to assure you that there are opportunities ahead, which of course, as I mentioned in my testimony, benefit us to diversify our economy so that we're not solely relying on tourism, which we currently are seeing, having a difficult time recovering. But, you know, we stand up a separate leg of the economy, and what that does is it creates a lot more jobs, right? And so, you know, that's what I think we're all looking forward to doing, is bring investments, whether they be through public-private partnerships or private equity investors, but to bring those opportunities so that the community can benefit, and we see people staying home rather than leaving and choosing to work here and set up careers here. So thank you.
You know, when I consider this, and I'll get right to you, Senator, when I, when I consider this, it reminds me of, it feels like we're bringing back an SRF. Those were mortgage jobs, you know, that that shipyard really was, generations, you know, grew up working there, and families, you know, had to move when SRF shut down, and that really hurt our economy. And I just see the 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 opportunities that exist around the airport in this as being really exciting to even bring our people back, but to definitely keep our people here with this, you know, opportunity. And Dr. Jones, thank you. I mean, you really, really nailed it on the fact that we got people that love this industry that don't mind working under tarps right now, but could you imagine if they had the facilities, you know, the state-of-the-art facilities that they, how amazing it would be for them and and that work environment? Senator, you you made me really excited when you discussed the fact that you are going to have opportunities for comment, and you are going to do town halls with regard to your investment opportunities. I think that's one of the things that's so important, because of course, there's going to be speculation, of course, there's going to be individuals that, you know, will will have some questions about this opportunity. So can you share that? Because I want to put that on the record, so our community understands that they're going to have a stake in this opportunity as well, to speak and to benefit.
Yes, sir, that's part, that is part of the process that we are adopting to make sure that there is comment period for everyone, including the stakeholders, the public, and of course, the operators of the airport. You're just going back and then, just as recent as last night, Senator, I got called from a off-island investor, and they just wanted to make sure that can our airport receive 747-800s, Antonov aircrafts, and A380 aircrafts? I said, definitely our airport has the capacity and the capability of receiving those aircrafts. So those are, they're reading, there's people that are off-island that have looked into our bill already.
Ricky, you're the guy who has to do what I do in troubled times right now, in terms of managing resources, and I understand it's a huge challenge right now up at the airport. We're probably going to have to introduce in the budget some of that recovery of fuel money that that was affected by taxes that were being abated or or non-levered. And we, you also have just a tremendous, huge facility that requires a lot of maintenance and upkeep, and as Mr. Tani said, that we have to elevate our level being where we are in Asia. Can you discuss why it's absolutely imperative that you change your model right now and just not rely on employment fees to be able to maintain the airport and to grow going forward?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Senator. You know, since COVID, we've lost over 150 million in revenues, right? And I think as we look to the future and with this prolonged recovery, we had spoken at a tourism forum a few months ago, just about how we are also kind of trudging our way through the recovery period with the private businesses. What they're, the pain that they're feeling is something that we are also going through as well, because with with recovery being a bit slower than we expected, we're having to adjust. We have Daphne Shimiziar, Comptroller, who is aggressively reducing costs so that we could ensure that we maintain rates that are as competitive as we can make them for our airline partners. We've been working with them for a number of things, on a number of things related to air service development for new routes, such as the Haneda Route. But I think all of these challenges that we've been facing since COVID and since Typhoon Moir and since the devaluation in the foreign currency exchange rate, we've just been doing as much as we can creatively, but being able to diversify our revenues, not away from aeronautical rates and fees, but in conjunction with it, will help us to be able to weather through some of these kind of bumps in, you know, just in our history and in the, that we're going to experience in the future. And so, you know, increasing non-aeronautical revenues, as an example, which are land leases, concessions, everything that we don't charge to airlines, will help to reduce the pressure on airlines, which will then help us to be, of course, more competitive in the marketplace. But I think when everyone spoke to all of the benefits that we're aiming for with this bill, it's it's aimed to create industries, and I think that's kind of the key, right? We're trying to create industries that will last generations, as you said, like the SRF. And so, you know, that takes heavy capital investment, intensive capital investment, and the only way to be able to attract that is to be able to have the negotiating ability and leverage from the airport's perspective to get the best deal for the government, for the airport. And so I think that's what this bill does, and it's it's so important to be able to diversify revenues away from just what we have currently. You know, we haven't had a long-term lease since the law was changed, and so we're looking forward to opening up those discussions, not only joining GVB, trying to get airline service here, but also to join GITA, to be able to entice investment, right, to the island. And so, you know, we want to do that responsibly. We won't just take money that gets thrown at us. Of course, we will be looking at the financial feasibility. We have to compare, you know, the 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 use of the land based on our airport layout plan that's approved by the FAA. There's a number of things that we have to do to ensure we prioritize aeronautical services before we look to anything else, and that is a requirement for us to to do. And so we like to say this all the time, but if someone wants to build a hangar on Guam, there's really only one place to build it. And so I think as we, as we kind of And so I think as we, as we kind of are going to go through the process, you know, after this bill hopefully gets enacted, I think we're going to be very responsible stewards of, of the, of the responsibility that's been provided to us and ensure that we have a lot of public comment, airport stakeholder engagement, expert analysis on what's the best path moving forward. So thank you.
So I'm going to address you now as Dr. Ricky because I'm going into my next question. Discuss what the economic viability, the boom and the sustainability, as we know our government from time to time has to go to market. And the fact is, we've now improved greatly in terms of our current standing with, with our ratings. Discuss how this economic incubator basically will sustain us going forward because of our positioning and the financial benefits.
So we've done a study previously that the economic benefit, direct, indirect, and induced by the airport is upwards of $2.5 billion, right? It starts with the ability to bring that type of visitors, cargo, and so forth through the airport. And so, you know, if we are able to increase the use, the highest and best use of the properties, 1,700 acres at the airport, 100 of which has already been set up for aeronautical activities, if we're able to leverage that to be able to increase the different types of aviation services that we have on, on island, you know, that direct, indirect, and induced benefit could be obviously substantial, right? But of course, that takes capital investment. And I know Dr. Jones had mentioned some of the general aviation activities, the amazing activities that are happening on our south ramp. And it's happening at the Nose Dock, which is a facility that is older than me. And so, and it takes capital investment to be able to repair these facilities, right? And she had mentioned a plan that we have, it's our master plan that we've updated, which incorporates plans. And plans require funding, and the airport at this point, at this moment, doesn't have capital funds to, outside of FAA grants, to be able to do these cap, heavy capital-intensive projects. And so the Nose Dock, for example, in some of our plans, has a general aviation terminal, right, as part of one of the five, 10, 20-year plans in that, but that requires investment. And so that's why partnering with private, Chairman mentioned, you know, private equity investors, to be able to leverage that will help to increase the activity at the airport and increase the economic potential, right? Really, not only for the airport, but really for, for Guam, so.
I see Frank smiling back there. He carries the weight on those investment opportunities. So I just got two more questions. Dr. Jones, I, I can't help but need you to reiterate in terms of capacity and what's already built here, that essentially we're ready for this. And, and you at the university and, and the work that you've done, the programs are built out and partnerships, like you said, with Trades Academy and the like, this also is not a dream. We're poised to take advantage of this immediately should the revenue and opportunities come.
Yes, thank you. We, we have the workforce and they're already here and they're looking for places to go and, and places for them to continue on and into their careers. On the economic side of the workforce development and the multiplier there, I'd like to think about the entire region because we also see students from our neighboring islands. And I look at it this way, I look at the United States and see the, the grow out of economic opportunity, and it's usually through the interstate highway system. We don't have an interstate highway system here, but if you look at what's going on in the region, each of the islands are building runways, Rota most recently, Tinian, Saipan, Chuk, Pompeii. And the scale of opportunity is different. It's not the high volume with the major international partners, but it opens up a transportation network for smaller-scale economic activity. And don't underestimate the smaller-scale economic activity. We're going to need that for a lot of reasons. It opens up opportunity for cooperation and trade in, among the island regions, something that has been cut off to us to a certain degree because we don't have this, this network that's appropriate to scale. And so I see that as an, as a growth opportunity for workforce, not just here on Guam, but throughout the region. And the multiplier there of farmers who want to get produce to Guam or to other parts of our, our island neighborhoods will be able to do that in a, in a more reliable and available way. I also see the opportunity for corporate headquarters. And if I'm dreaming a little bit more on the general aviation side, I think about the private jet operations that want to bring high, high impact, and I use that not just about income, but high-impact environments. These could be, we could see the rise of outpost corporate headquarters, especially given the trade environment, that they would want to bring their, their executives or their business operations needing GIAA, general aviation. And that corridor there on the south gate could see a rise of development where there are outposts for these international corporate headquarters, in which gives them an opportunity to work and have cooperation with the region and with the United States. So it's a dream, but the idea that if we have this build-out for the, the general aviation opportunity, with it will come that diversity that others are speaking about here today on the panel.
Dr. Jones, we didn't set this up, but you segued me to my final question, that's the Senator Lee. Do you see this now and can GBB now get excited about expanding Guam with just what Dr. Jones talked about in terms of the regional capabilities for return visitors and the like by this outgrowth now of this airport and its support services, but possibly even creating lower fare flights with, with additional opportunities throughout Micronesia and, and the Mariana's, making it kind of a, a one-regional opportunity to expand tourism and get back on track?
Yes, thank you for that question, Senator. And I just want to put it back to you and, and your colleagues and really thank all of the cosponsors of this bill because I, we can get excited because we have more than eight here. We know how the process works. So certainly thank you to the chairman for introducing it, but thank you to yourself, Senator Ada, Senator Munya Barnes, Senator Borja, Senator, or Speaker Frank Blas, Senator Solis Matinani, Senator Parkinson, Senator Sinagastin, and Senator Guma Tauta, who've already signed on as cosponsors of this legislation and have provided their support upfront. So we know that, you know, many of the things that I spoke about in my testimony, the opportunity for retail, specialty retail, food and beverage that was mentioned by the, the DM and advertising, currency exchange, airline lounges, all of those things lend itself to an incredible experience for our visitors at their very first touchdown on our, on our beautiful island and the very last impression when they leave. And so making sure that, that destination Guam approach, the team Guam approach, we're working together with our partners at the airport and really thinking about from the very moment that they land to the time that they leave, that they're having that wonderful experience and really experiencing that holiday spirit and we're welcoming them is going to be so important moving forward. So I thank you for your support of this and I look forward to its passage.
As I close, I just want to get a comment also from Mr. Tani. How do you see this expanding opportunities now to bring back tourism?
Yeah, that idea of including neighboring island to promote Guam is a very interesting idea. So when tourists select destinations, sometimes we compare with Okinawa or Hawaii, especially those Asian market. A lot of Korean tourists, Japanese tourists goes to Hawaii or Okina. But when we talk about it, Hawaii has a lot of islands. It's not only Waikiki, so tourists is aiming to go, they go to different island, Kauai or Big Island to see volcano erupting. It's totally different purposes. Guam is such a tiny island compared to those region. But Micronesia has a lot of potential as well. If we, we do have some connection with those neighboring island, that's going to add much more value. When we're talking about the sport tourism, so Guam is well-known, very beautiful island, very beautiful ocean. So that's why, so we invested fish and marine park to Guam. However, there are those neighboring island has beautiful coral and untouched places to swim, and that's going to add more value. When airport expand the ability, capability with the financial resources, and maybe we can consider those expansion or connection, so that's going to bring much more benefit we didn't have before. I think it's a very good idea. I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to finish with four seconds left, so I did it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you, thank you, Senator Duñez. Just to, again, as the Chairman of Federal Affairs as well, as mentioned about SRF and in, in my communication, of course, with the admirals, because we have two out here now, and my federal partners, the SRF is coming back. So as much as we hear, you know, kind of some grim news about cuts and things like that, SRF will be coming back as, as, as well. So just, thank you with that. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everybody. So I, I understand that this bill's, is a semi-reintroduction of a previous bill from the last term. It was Bill 319-37. So I just have a question. Do you foresee maybe for Mr. Kanata, Executive Director, or anybody on your team? With that passed bill, 319, do you foresee this type of development that you're, you're describing, that's being described today? Could that exist with that bill?
Yeah, I think the difference between that bill and this bill obviously is time. Time is of the essence. And I think as it relates to the process of getting to a point where we can solicit, select, and award concessions is the issue. I think if the bill passed last term, we'd have all the time to be able to do everything we need to do. But at this moment, we have concessions that are, are expiring next year, and it takes time for not only putting and adopting policies and procedures, but also to be able to solicit, select, and award concessions. And then even after that, need the ability to potentially have capital improvements inside the terminal. And so I think, you know, timing is a, is a big issue. And so we are looking to move that time forward, and I think that's what this bill attempts to do.
Okay. And when you're saying it reduces the time, where does it reduce the time?
Yeah, so in this bill, it places the authority to adopt policies and procedures for soliciting, selecting, and awarding concessions with the airport board. And of, of course, with the executive manager mentioning that, of course, there would be public comment period and so forth to be able to ensure that we engage all the experts, stakeholders, and the public as well, to ensure that process is, is open and transparent.
So you're saying this bill would retain that or no?
We're, we, that's, that's the intent of the airport, to be able to do that.
Okay, yeah, the question was, so how would this save time?
Because having it, having the board have the authority to be able to adopt these policies and procedures would expedite our ability to put out solicitations.
Okay, so yeah, I think that's one of the crux of the differences between the bill. When you compare this bill and the previous bill, there's some telling changes. And one of that is it seems to circumvent the AAA process where things can be vetted. So I know in your testimony provided just earlier that you're going to go to the town, you're going to go do town halls and everything, but, and on the same, on the opposite side, I'm hearing that there's going to be reduction in, in transparency because this AAA process will be circumvented. Because, yeah, if you look at the language closely, it's not rules or regs, but policies and procedures, which have a shorter time period. But in my understanding of the AAA process, if you put your mind to it, you can pretty much get it done quicker than what Gov Guam, the average Gov, average time that Gov Guam does it. And so that, you know, to me, that is one of the issues, I think, with this version of the bill. You know, of course, I do support the airport to recover. Obviously Guam is still in recovery phase in regards to its main driver and, which has impacted the airport significantly. And I do understand that the need to, to diversify revenue sources, aeronautical as well as non-aeronautical. And, you know, I do want to support economic change, economic diversification, but not at the expense of safeguards. And so one of the things I'm seeing is the issue of transparency and how these regulations are going to be implemented. You know, we know that it's difficult enough for people to come to meetings at these board level, board levels. Even here at the legislature, there is difficulty to attend these meetings, but it, it has much a high, a higher chance of transparency. The other part that's been added to this bill that didn't exist in the previous bill, it, it starts off, notwithstanding any other provision of law, including without limitations, 5GCA Chapter 5, which is the procurement law. So we are circumventing procurement law, and then Section 5127 and Chapter 9, and 21GCA Section 60112, 60114, 60115. These are huge, these are gaping holes of safeguards that are being removed, where the airport can lease without the governor's authority, without the governor's approval, without the legislative, legislature's approval. And so to me, this is a cause of concern to include this in this bill. I, I am open to listening to expanding the lease, the length of leases, because I understand that can definitely attract airlines, it attracts businesses, it's more sustainable. But when we're, we're removing the safeguards, to me, this looks like privatization, right? We want to, we want it both ways. We want to privatize completely, but also have access to bond, bonds that get the AAA exemption. So that is a concern to me as well. You know, the safeguards are there for a reason, to ensure that, you know, we're fair, you know, things are, decisions are made in a just way, but also to look after the economics. And I know as much as we want to hurry up and make Guam recover, which I too am very interested in, I just am also very concerned about the path that this bill, as it is introduced, is proposing. So I would like to, yeah, I'm open to hearing, increasing the terms, the years, but not removing safeguards, I think, that are crucial to the economics recovery. And it looks like my time's up.
Thank you, Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Guma Tauta?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity today, and thanks to everyone here in this room. Mr. Chair, airport leases are really, should be important tools to all of us, and I think everyone in this room would agree, to help make the airport as self-sustaining as possible and ensure that the users of the airport contribute their fair share towards the operation of the airport. Also, I agree that lease agreements should be developed in order to protect the airport from uses that are detrimental to the airport's operation and development. I, I wasn't here five months ago, and I'd like to say I'm glad I got two former senators here in the room, at least that here in front of me, to help maybe get me through part of this next discussion point. But from notes, during the public hearing on a very similar bill in the last legislature, again, five months ago, there was a comment that, you know, that the airport, actually the airport noted at the time, that the AAA process requires that such rules and regulations to be submitted to the Guam legislature upon completion of the necessary requirements and to ensure that it is a fully transparent and accountable process. Now, for the benefit of the committee and those that are listening at home, to what extent will GIAA incorporate the procedures set forth in the administrative extent will GIAA incorporate the procedures set forth in the administrative adjudication law in developing and implementing policies and procedures for the solicitation, selection, and award of concession agreements, and for the leasing of other GIAA facilities and properties?
Our public hearing.
So Senator, just in that, in response to your question, and thank you for that. So we're going to be holding public comment periods, we're going to be holding stakeholder meetings, and of course, getting their inputs, similar to the, to the way we do the AAA, and taking those, all their comments, of course, and putting it in, and hopefully coming to that solution at the end of the, at the end of the day, where we take all their inputs and incorporate what we can. Because I asked the question, and I noted, I mean, I just, it caught my attention, and it's important to say it today. And you said that GIAA operates in a highly regulated environment. This is going to be looked at by the Federal Aviation Administration, which I would say that we think about in 2025 terms, that is a lot of eyeballs on any transaction, anything or any plan that would be brought to bear upon, that you guys would bring to help grow this airport. And I am more encouraged, encouraged by what you just said this morning.
Right.
Can you comment?
Just FYI, we were supposed to have it this morning, but we have a monthly meeting with FAA, and they go through, they scrutinize everything that we do, and to include capital improvement projects, to include concessions or investors that are, that are, that's happening in the airport. They make sure that we stay in line with FAA regulations.
Yes, Senator Guimata, I'll just, if I could add, you know, with regards to these FAA assurances and rules and regulations that govern really the use of properties, the disposal of properties, land, is not allowed without FAA approval, and they look, they do not typically allow that because properties that are within the airport vicinity or ownership is supposed to be for, first and foremost, aeronautical activities, and also to be used for self-sustaining nature of our operations. And so some of the regulations that are required, of course, are aeronautical, is priority. Additionally, you cannot be disposing of property, and long-term leases that are beyond a term of 50 years, in many cases, and in most cases, are viewed as a disposal of land. And so, you know, that is not allowed under their regulations. In addition to that, if we are doing any, if we exhaust the use or need of aeronautical activity for any given property, if we do non-aeronautical, then it has to be at fair market value, has to be at fair market value, that's according to the regulations. And so, you know, those types of things, in addition, we have an airport layout plan that is approved by the FAA. We did it under our master plan just this last couple of years. And so the airport layout plan, as approved by the FAA, if we want to do any development, we have to ensure that that is part of that airport layout plan. And so that is approved in conjunction with airport, in coordination with the FAA. And so those are just a few things, you know, we're talking about here as it relates to the use of properties.
Thank you, Ricky. And just a couple of other things. I know that in your testimony, I don't know if I, if I was writing it, I wouldn't have read it out loud, you mentioned the dollar amount of investment. And so without disclosing any of the details of any active negotiations between the GIAA and investors, what kind of information can be shared at this point regarding external entities that have expressed interest in doing business with the airport, particularly in the event that the Guam International Airport Authority is authorized by law to enter into longer-term concessions and lease agreements? You said 100 million, so I...
Senator, I, without disclosing, right, but there have been interests that have been expressed recently, and usually, probably the guys that operate MROs can speak to that, but they're usually in the triple-digit hundreds of millions of dollars. So depending upon the scale of an MRO facility, it could be 100 to a couple hundred million dollars. And so, you know, there's significant economic benefit.
Is that it? You have another one? Come on, Brian, just one?
No, I think in previous hearings on, on previous bills, the airport has accumulated a list of opportunities foregone, and those, I recall, exceeded over half a billion.
Again, I wasn't here five months ago, so thank you. I just wanted to, just to say, Mr. Chair, that airports really must ensure that they structure lease agreements to protect their current and future interests and generate sufficient revenue for the airport. And I totally agree that non-aeronautical leases can be great sources of airport revenue, but it is important that non-aeronautical uses, not, that they don't impede aviation use and future development of the airport. I just wanted to close with this, and this is more to Dr. Jones's point, and I'm going to say this in deference to a very great leader of this region, and his statement was, "The oceans do not separate us, they bring us closer together." This effort to help the Guam International Airport, I believe, will do just that in my cornicea. So thank you again for your service, Dr. Jones, and thank you, everyone, for being with us today.
Thank you, Senator Guimata. Senator Tala Tadegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues, and of course, good morning to the airport. I wonder who's running the airport right now, everybody's here. But I understand there's an invested interest, but there's also an invested interest in the property that this body oversees to ensure your trust. Every property in the government of Guam belongs to the people of Guam. So it's important that we are entrusted, that we take care of this property and use it wisely, and ensure that, and ensure that we have also the opportunity to invest, our investment is to our best interest. So everyone knows that I've, you know, introduced legislation several times to increase the lease, but to 50 years, that is quite large. And I was reading something from the FAA, Ricky, that you mentioned earlier from the US FAA, that the FAA notes that most tenant ground leases of 30 to 35 years are sufficient to retire a tenant's initial financing and provide reasonable return for the tenant's development of major facilities. Additionally, lease terms exceeding 50 years are generally considered a disposal of airport property and requires FAA approval. So we're looking at property extending a lease up to 50 years may inhibit the opportunity for you to expand, the airport to expand, to take that property and build on it in your own capacity. Dr. Jones, you spoke about economic growth. I mean, I'm the Oversight Chair of GIDEA, and I totally believe in it. I've been pushing for this, understanding the reason for it. But do you truly feel that we should bypass the AAA process when doing these properties?
I'm all for growth with safeguards, and I hear very clearly that the FAA has very stringent safeguards on the use of its property. I also recognize that your interest in making sure that leases are transparent and in the best interest and open for access to others, I understand that, and I think the AAA process certainly is part of that safeguard. I'd like to hear more about alternative safeguards, because I think that what GIA is proposing is, with some continued review by you senators, could address some of your concerns about where those safeguards are in a different, more timely approach. So we have the AAA process, which is well-known, but we also know that it does have its delays, and maybe, perhaps, what they're proposing is a chance to take the benefits of all approaches to move forward with a plan that clearly has been stalled for many years. So that's my...
Thank you, Dr. Anna. I appreciate you to find a win-win situation that you provided so that we can incorporate those safeguards at the same time, you know? Maybe we can expedite in some certain circumstances. So GM Director, can you tell me that, is there any plans on subleasing, allowing anyone who wants to lease these agreement, these properties for a sublease? Are you going to allow that?
I don't think we're there yet as far as subleasing, but we do have opportunities for them to sublease from, if they do take a long-term lease.
I'm sorry you say that.
So there is opportunities for folks to sublease if, from the main...
Leasee.
Yes.
So you're going to allow that? So a 50-year contract, then somebody has that contract, and then they don't do well on it, and you're going to allow that? There's going to be something in the contract to allow them to sublease it and take over the lease without the authority of...
Not take over lease, that first, that main lease was...
Well, just sublease, kind of same smell, you know, if you think about it, because now they're leasing from the leasee, right, with their agreements. My question is, is the airport going to have to approve that subleasee?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Before it's done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's my question. Could you also, Director, mention who are the board members right now sitting on, at the airport?
So I got our vice, or our chair, Mr. Brian Bamba, our vice chair is Mr. Big Sapti, our secretary is Mr. Don Weekly, and we got our director Lucy Alcorn, director Jess Garcia, director Rosie Tynatongo, and director Doian Morato.
And these people will be the ones to decide on these agreements, right, these contracts?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm tell you with full integrity, these folks are definitely the people that will definitely make sure that things are done correctly.
And then scrutinizing, you know, conflict of interest. Mr. GM, scrutinizing a conflict of interest for each of your board members to ensure that they have no interest, invested interest, to allow certain contracts to go through, how well do you scrutinize these conflict of interests?
Well, we definitely look at them, and but these, our board of directors, and they're first to come out. We've had it in certain instances where they have a conflict of interest, and they declare it right from the start.
Do you do any internal investigation, just, you know, you know, you do drug testing and things like that? Do you do any kind of investigating at all on your own?
As of this date, no, ma'am, we have not, because our board of directors, they have been very upfront in making sure that if they do have a conflict of interest, that they do declare it.
Has there been any board members in the past that have taken advantage or who has been unethical? Not this board members, but members in the past too that you know of?
I cannot speak on previous, previous boards, but as far as this board is concerned, no, ma'am.
Who handles the baggage handling?
Senator, if I may, excuse me, as the Chairman of the Board, I can assure you that the members that serve with me together on the board have the interest of the people of Guam and the Airport Authority at heart and in mind. And there have been instances where it's a very robust discussion, together with our legal counsel and management, on whether or not recusal is required for certain issues that are going to be discussed. I don't see this matter handled any different. So I can assure you that there is a robust process, and we lend, you know, a lot of integrity to each other to come forth when those matters arise.
Brian, do you know of any discrepancies in the past of other board members, maybe not this group, but in the past that's been questioned?
Personally, I do not. Personally, I do not.
Okay, I do. So that's why I'm asking and ensuring, because we're going to have a group of people decide on a 50-year contract for a sweetheart deal, and that's what we have to be very careful about. You know, this is a people's property. It's not the airport's property by itself, they oversee it, but it's the people's property, and we have to ensure that the protections are put in place for today and for our future. Now, are your meetings open to the public so anybody can listen to? Do you have any closed, has there ever been any closed meetings for the board?
No, there haven't been, and yes, they are open to the public. We follow the requirements.
That's good.
Again, I can't speak to any previous board members or actions, but I do believe that the process for nomination and confirmation by this body is robust as well, and so in the future, I'd expect that you would, you know, apply the same scrutiny that you have with other board members, including myself.
Do you have a contract with bag handlers at the airport?
What'd you say, ma'am?
Is it in-house handling the baggage?
No, the baggage handling is handled by, at this time, it's Menzies.
Menzies.
But there's a transition now that the, we have a new contract that will be, that would be taking over.
Is that a, considered a smaller contract? You're looking at 15 years versus the 50 years for baggage? You want to stop the clock? I think you need to watch that clock. Give me a little more minutes, because, yeah, I just noticed, yeah, it's okay.
So that is, that baggage handling contract is three years with options up to five, like one year after, so 3-1-1.
That was my question. My question was 15, would this be considered on the 15-year lease?
I don't think, no, no, ma'am.
It would be a 50-year lease.
No, ma'am, not 50.
Just give me an example of contracts, Ricky?
Sure. Thanks, Senator, for your question. Yeah, so this is specific, the Bill 67 is specific to the, to the leasing of properties. So for the example, for a service provider, you know, like you use baggage handling, for example, yeah, those are typically shorter terms, and so this, this bill isn't meant to address those types of service contracts for, you know, providing those aviation services. So it's mainly looking at leases or like leasing facilities and not servicing the facility. So usually, when we do those contracts, they're typically 3-1-1. You know, we consider a lot of things like, okay, you know, is there going to be a large investment of equipment that you have to do, like for custodial or for grass cutting or grounds maintenance? And, you know, if you look at it longer term, then you could consider, okay, they could invest in some more efficient equipment to do the work, because they have a longer time horizon. So those are, you know, those are, interestingly enough, those are procurements for spending, whereas this one, we're looking at revenue generating contracts, and so, yeah, that's, we're not looking at doing a 15-year service contract. It's mainly for the lease of facilities.
What about Lotte?
Lotte...
Or DFS, or anyone else who wants to?
So Lotte, DFS, those are specialty retail concessions, companies that provide that type of service, and so, or provide that offering. And so those would be limited to up to 15. So, you know, when we, when we look at the longer term, it just gives a lot of flexibility to be able to, you know, we're not going in saying it's going to be 15, or it's going to be 50, right? It's up to, so if, if there, for example, more capital investment that we could ask a contractor or a tenant to be able to put in, and they say, well, you know, they look at their numbers, and we look at their numbers after they send it to us, and we say, well, is it reasonable to, if you put in an additional X million of dollars, to extend the lease from what we're looking at initially? That's kind of the flexibility we're looking at. Construction costs are typically a lot higher on Guam, as we all know, with labor and materials. And so the flexibility to go beyond 30 to 35 years, as mentioned in the FAA guidance, those were general terms, right? And so being able to go beyond that, because we understand that construction costs are that much more typically on Guam, we, you know, the up-to language is really, is really what's going to be helpful to us in negotiating. And when we negotiate, we want to, you know, there's, there's levers you pull, right? There's length of the term of a lease, there's which, or there's upfront investment in fixing a facility or building out a facility, and then there's the revenue that we want to gain from the lease itself. And so in some cases, depending, like now, if we were looking at something, depending on what the scenario is, we would want to get revenues upfront, right? And so, you know, we, because lease revenues is money that we could collect and, and generate... that we could collect and generate revenue. But when we look at, you know, the level of capital investment, you know, how much capital investment are they going to put into the property? How long should that lease be? There are just a number of variations and variables we look at. But when we get into the negotiating table, we just want to be able to have that leverage and flexibility to get the best deal. So that's, yeah.
How long is the lease for Lotte right now?
That was extended through public law 30, that was passed into 37th. That one ends in July next year.
How long was it?
Was it? That was start, it was 10 years and then we were able to extend that by three years. And they put in a capital investment for that period to improve, if you've gone there, they've improved the offerings there. They put in about two, a little over $2 million for that extended three-year period.
So from 10 to 15 years, why, why just 15, the number?
15?
Yeah. How did the number come up?
Well, when we look at the industry, right, and I know the chairman, the chairman's looking at me, because we talk about this all the time. You know, typically you would look at a 10-year lease, right? And that's what we did with the past concession. And so, you know, the industry is changing rapidly post-COVID. And so when we look at the concession industry generally, you know, Guam, like I said, Guam's construction costs are a bit higher. And so the things that you, we want to look at are, you know, is there a need to offer a term beyond 15 years? Because the longer the term, the potential more investment that could be put into a space, but also potentially higher revenue that the airport could ask for. And so, but you know, the up to language is, is just an option for us. Because when you get into negotiations under a competitive solicitation process, that's what we're going to be looking at, is just having options to be able to generate the best deal for the airport and the people of Guam. So that's, that's what we look at up to 15. And that's why we're looking at that, that flexibility.
How long will it take for you to write these guidelines, rules and regulations?
Well, we, we are looking at drafts and have worked with our attorneys already on that. And so, you know, timelines are going to be as quick as we can. I think that's what we're looking at. But considering the fact that we want to make sure that once these are out, we engage the airport stakeholders, all the potential concessionaires that might be interested. And so, you know, typically, like when we do.
And the public?
Yes, of course, and, and, and public comment. And, you know, the commitment is there. We, we don't know everything, right? And so I think it's important for us to engage the public, engage the stakeholders, engage people like all of our concessions, our food and beverage concessions, to be able to get their input because the industry is changing. And, and I think it's, it's important for us to, you know, kind of ensure that we consider all of those things and adjust. But the commitment is that we want to engage the public and we want to ensure that there's, there's an opportunity for everyone to get their comment in and to be able to, for us to look at it and say, this makes a lot of sense, right? And, and incorporate it into what we finally do.
My last question, Mr. Chair. FAA stated between 30 to 35 years. What would you, would you be amenable to 35 years?
Well, I think we, when we start talking about investments in capital investments and lease terms, I mean, I think we start, we want to start at, we don't want to start engaging at 50. We would like to just start at something more reasonable to ensure that they can recoup their investment. I don't think we look at all of leases saying, or anyone that comes in saying, you're going to start at 50, because we have no leverage after that, right? We, we start at something lower and then we say, well, what other investments will you be putting in? But if we're looking at something like Air Vietnam, who did write to us several years ago during the pandemic, saying they want to put in 280 million, the first thing you want, you think about is like, okay, we need to know where, what does this align with our airport layout plan, our master plan, does it, you know, where's the money coming from? What's their plans? So it's, it's exciting, but it's also, we need to look through that with due diligence and, you know, really engage with them a little bit more. Unfortunately, that fell through because of, you know, obvious reasons. But I think, I think that's the approach that the airport will take. It's, it's one of, you know, just ensuring that we have due diligence and we are ensuring that you want to know that is this money coming from the right place? Is the financial feasibility of a company that wants, that has all these plans? We don't just trust it, we want to verify. So that's kind of the process.
And then thank you so much. And thank you to everyone who came by and testified and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tagui. Senator Trelawney.
Mr. Chair, for all of those who are here testifying and for all of those, I see airport employees here, including the fire department, surprisingly. But I'm also in support, everybody. I think that was the vision, right, when the land was set aside, was that we are going to see investments on that property and we are going to see economic activity. So I don't think there's anybody that's opposed to that. But what the bill proposes to do, I think that concerns me, is pretty much to remove all of the safeguards that we currently have in our law regarding sweetheart deals, deals without good value, that for very good reason, we see today, that we see the concerns and we see the laws that were passed in response to those things happening. And we see also that the bill proposes to remove conformance to the procurement law. It wants to exempt the airport from conformance to the law that says the, no property shall be transferred out of the government of Guam without approval of the legislature. That's what the courts in YTK said as well, when they had the big controversy at the port, that the property belongs to people of Guam. It should be transferred with the consent of the legislature. So this bill proposes that all of these laws are going to be exempted, including the AAA process, and that the airport will make its policies and procedures for solicitation, selection and award, and adopt from time to time changes to these policies. And what our procurement law currently supposed to do is give very much transparency for all companies that are trying to compete and also fairness, so that the policies are not changing continuously for different people at different times. And I am still concerned about that. I don't see why those exemptions are necessary, especially for non-aeronautical uses, somebody said earlier, because we have to do industry standards. But these are non-aeronautical leases. And my other concern is that the airport came in not too long ago with a similar bill for 30 years. And they said they were perfectly fine with 30 years. And all of these investors, including Air Vietnam, were happy with a 30-year investment to create maintenance facilities or hangars. And I asked the airport then, and I still haven't heard an answer, why haven't you, if you have a plan for your properties, laid out which properties you can lease out for any industries involved in airport airline maintenance or air, or those other types of facilities that you already are aware of, and make the exceptions for those or the ones that you know will require the very heavy investment as a policy across the board as opposed to individual basis. And it's also very concerning to hear all of the kind of negotiations, maybe, that have already taken place outside of procurement. So the, this bill also proposes to extend the concessionaire to 15 years. And as you said, you currently have one for 10 years. It was completely acceptable to those bidding back then at 10 years. In fact, it was so valuable to them that they've been in litigation for a decade over that 10-year concessionaire. And so I don't, I guess I'm not following your rationale that you're not going to be able to get bidders unless we extend it to 15 years, when it seems to me, you still have a high demand for space or for concessions, that people want to do business in the airport. And so I guess that's not really evidenced here. And it's not evidenced in the litigation that, that contract was not valuable at 10 years. The, my question to you, Mr. General Manager, Senator Canata, is that you said you need this in order to meet debt obligations. Is the airport not able to meet its debt obligations?
We are able to meet our debt obligations, as of this date.
All right. And then we, we were asked to extend the Lotte lease for three more years. And the rationale at that time was because the industry was down. And so it was a bad time to go out for a bid because the, you know, we needed them to recover, everybody to recover a little before you go out for a bid. But not because we needed a longer term or longer term on that lease.
Well, that, at that time, Senator, yes, because we were still recovering from, from COVID and also from Mawar, we needed that extension because at that time, the market was not ripe.
Why did, why do the rules have to change between how that?
Thank you, Senator Trelawney.
Mr. Chair.
Senator Trelawney.
If I could just ask one more question, Mr. Chair.
I'll allow you one more question.
So the court has in certain occasions found that the airport did not follow the procurement law in that concession agreement. That's why this litigation is going on and on. So it's not final yet, but how exactly are your rules going to be different than the procurement law and the AAA in guaranteeing fairness, value and transparency? Because we haven't been able to see those rules either. And if the airport is able to change the rules whenever they want to according to the bill, then how would that be fair to different companies?
Yeah, I think, I think when we, when we think about the process, Senator, the commitment by the airport is to ensure that there's adequate competition. Because we, we believe that a competitive solicitation is going to get us the best outcome. And so, you know, when we talk about the policies and procedures, it's going to include a competitive proposal procedure. And so that's, that's the goal. When we adopt these policies and procedures, there's not going to be anything in contravention to procurement law, because I think procurement law is for spending, right? Chapter 5, Title 5 is spending. And we're looking at ensuring that.
Sorry, what was that word? It's what? The procurement law is what?
Is for spending government funds. And what we're looking at doing is ensuring that.
But the bill exempts you from the procurement law?
The bill exempts us from Chapter 5, Title 5, Section 5127, which is specific to the five-year lease limitation.
The whole Chapter 5, 5127, and the entire Chapter 9, and then 21 GCA 60112, 114 and 115.
Yeah, it's specific to 5127 because 5127 is a five-year lease limitation. And we're looking at trying to do 50, up to 50 and up to 15. So, but, you know, when we look at, so it doesn't, you know, procurement law is for spending. And so we're, I guess the, the thought process is that that doesn't necessarily conform to revenue generating contracts and trying to solicit for revenue generating contracts. You know, you go for the lowest bid. We're not going for the lowest bid for revenue generating. And so there's conflict in GSA regulations because it's for spending. The industry standard is to do competitive solicitations, which is what we are going to do. But it's for revenue generating contracts. So there is a contradiction in looking at Chapter 5, Title 5, because, or GSA regulations, because that is very specific to spending. We're not going to do policies and procedures for sole source.
How do, how do we know that? We have no idea this allows you to do anything. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Trelawney. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yes. Thank you very much, panel. Just want to say that, yeah, this bill didn't just happen overnight. This bill took over 20 years to put together. Over the years, as I actually last chaired the committee on aviation, we saw the challenges of the airport. At that time, we applied, again, we petitioned under Governor, Governor Camacho, petitioned the Department of Transportation for cabotage extension or exemption for both passenger and cargo. We were granted cargo. We weren't granted passenger service. At that time, the airport was not quite ready to accommodate the amount of cargo that would be transited over through Guam. Over the years as well, at that time, that we, that we were granted the cargo exemption, we had a shorter runway. We have since lengthened out our runway. And now we can fly nonstop between Guam, East and West Coast. Over the pandemic, Guam was a major hub for nonstop flights, bringing supplies through Guam, to points in the United States and beyond. If I'm not mistaken, the Anataf was here quite a few times with cargo as, as well. Over the years, I had traveled with the airport and looked at and studied other destinations and what their airports were doing and what we weren't. And most especially, the concentration on the airports that are very competitive to us. And the one thing that we were, are in a disadvantage of is that our airport leases cannot substantiate the growth of companies that may want to expand. We've had numerous inquiries. We have been selling Guam as America in Asia. And it's a great seller. It's a fantastic seller, America in Asia. But when they come to Guam as America in Asia, we don't have quite the Asian business models, basically. The latest airport that I visited was not just NIAA, but Cebu, Cebu International. One of the first questions I asked was, how long are your leases here? 50 years minimum. Minimum? Yeah. Nobody, nobody will have anything less than 50. An average mortgage is 30 years. By the time their mortgage expires, your lease expires. There's no room to really make, make money. So the 50-year, I mean, that's, that's minimum. That's minimum. Airports in other destinations, the unfortunate, the unfortunate thing about what we have at this point is our airport is the older model at this point. We haven't adjusted. We haven't switched to the newer model airports. We have not kept up with other destinations. And so if we want to continue down this road, we built out the airport. Airport's been built out. We increased the runway. We lengthened the runway. We're, we're ready to go. If we can't see that potential, if we can't trust ourselves, and I get, I remind our colleagues, they ask about the credibility of board members, we confirm every single board member. They come before us. If we don't trust board members, then why the hell do we confirm them? We have the ability to. We have the ability to oversight and call you in anytime. And I would ask my colleagues to join me. Please join me at the meetings. I attend every single frickin' meeting that my oversight has. Here are your grievances there. And we look at sweetheart deals. Yes, I want a sweetheart deal. I want a sweetheart deal for our island. I want to be the sweetheart of a deal. And this is the public hearing right now. If anybody of my colleagues up here knows of a sweetheart deal, please point it out. Point those individuals out that have sweetheart deals going right now, right now. We're in a public hearing. Point them out. Please point them out. This is the time.
Mr. Chair, are you asking us to point out some sweetheart deals? The YTK is one of them. That's one.
We're talking about the airport. We're talking about the airport.
Well, okay, I thought you wanted some feedback.
That didn't go through as well. You're out of order.
Just some feedback.
Senator July, you're out of order. We're talking about the airport. Or I'm sorry, not Terlahe. Senator Taitegui, I'm sorry. My mistake. So again, you guys are hardworking. We have the airport. You have the airport right now, and it's empty as heck. It's empty. It wasn't built out to be that, like that. We have an opportunity, colleagues, right at our hands right now for economic prosperity, an opportunity outside of tourism. But not only that, but it would enhance tourism. And as Dr. Jones said, this is... Building out the airport would not only help out Guam, but this region. This is a regional buildup. So again, my colleagues, if there's a person that is sitting in front of you right now that you don't trust, that you think has a sweetheart deal, point it out right now. Point them out. You know, Dr. Longo, all of us, we love going to Capital Kitchen. We love going to Capital Kitchen. We all love. Get votes, shake hands. I'm glad that you extended out the lease because all the money they invested has been sub-led. And the banks won't loan them the money because of the short length of the lease. You kidding me? And that's one major thing when we ask the airports. I hate to travel, but when we go to the airports, this is one of the things that we ask the airports. What are you doing to be very successful? What are your standards? And what was before COVID versus now has changed. The model 10 years ago is not the model now for airports. And like I said, we are way behind. This gives us an opportunity to catch up and be competitive. If we want to be competitive, if we want to continue to sell America and Asia and make Guam Guam again, let's be America in Asia. Let's work with entrepreneurs. Let's work with more public and private partnerships. And as the committee chair, and I tell all my oversights, agencies, we're going to scrutinize you. And one of the things that I told the airport, I said, "I'm going to do this for the airport because I want all eyes on you." Did I not tell you guys that? I want all eyes to be on the airport. Want it to be scrutinized, and I want the airport to show that they are the success and they will be the models of success. With that being said, thank you, everyone, for being here today. I appreciate all you being here. And I'm glad it's right now, it's downtime with the airport anyway, right? But with that, thank you very much. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll get to the next bill. Thank you very much. Thank you, and welcome back from recess. And yes, okay, the first bill, okay, that concludes this morning's public hearing on Bill 67-38. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on Bill 67-38. You have seven days from today in which you may be addressed to myself here, Senator Jesse A. Luhon, as chairman of the committee. You can mail it to 163 West Chalan Santo Papa in Hagatnia. Or you may also send testimonies to senator.luhan@guamlegislature.gov. We're now on Bill number 30-38. I'd like to welcome my colleagues, Senator Duñez, my co-chair, Senator Sabina Perez, and Senator Terlahe. Who else? That's it. Right here. And if, again, I'll defer to Senator Sabina Perez for their opening with her... She's the sponsor of the bill. So go ahead and introduce your bill.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for scheduling the hearing on this bill. Greatly appreciated. And for those that came here to testify, thank you for being here. Bill 30-38 aims to implement an island-wide garbage collection program that averts residential rate increases, lowers rates for residential subscribers, creates substantially lower rates for low-income households, and creates the framework to lower rates even further with external subsidies. In implementing this measure, this bill aims to ensure that every Guam resident's garbage is collected and properly disposed of through an island-wide collection program. And this legislation mirrors many jurisdictions across the United States and which can effectively address illegal dumping while lowering collection costs through economies of scale. Bill 30-38 proposes to streamline the subscription process through collaboration with Guam Waterworks Authority to ensure more households are covered, and proposes a low-income assistance program and rate. This legislation is one of a series of measures highlighted in the 2020 MSW Consultant Management Audit, which was statutorily required by the Guam Public Utilities Commission. It would provide a path of greater autonomy to Guam Solid Waste Authority by stabilizing its customer base, optimize efficiency through increased households serviced on the same routes, and mitigate, if not lower, rates through a doubling of the number of customers. The audit stated further that with the cost of disposal and processing being inherently high on Guam, efficiency and cost controls are especially important. Since the 2020 audit, Guam Solid Waste Authority has taken significant steps to improve its operations by addressing the management audit's findings, such as reducing costs through renegotiation of contracts, internalizing its workforce, route optimization, and fleet expansion and replacement, some with the electric vehicles. Guam Solid Waste Authority, under the guidance of a dedicated board of directors and management team, are on a mission to attain full autonomy of not only its operations, which occurred in 2019, but also for the post-closure of ORDOT, which shall be determined by the court and which the receiver has stated will occur. Bill 30-38 promotes financial stability, which is crucial to ensure Guam Solid Waste Authority sustains sanitary operations that protects the health of our environment and people. Additionally, this bill promotes equity. Everyone generates trash, and we each share in this responsibility to ensure proper disposal of our waste. Without this program, Guam Solid Waste subscribers would face a rate increase, which was published last year, a rate increase to $42 per month by 2027. By implementing rate transparency and allowing for external subsidies from legislative appropriations and federal grants, Bill 30-38 ensures that Guam's waste collection system remains financially stable while protecting our environment and reducing household costs. I'd like to thank my co-sponsors, Vice Speaker Vianthony Ada, Senators Chris Barnett, Shelley Calvo, Sabrina Salas-Matinani, Teloty Taitegui, Theresa M. Terlaki. I look forward to... I look forward to support of this bill, as well as look forward to the discussions to follow. This is Massey.
Thank you, Senator. So we only have three folks. I think all you are providing oral testimony as well, right? Yes, okay. So I tell you what, why don't we just start actually from the, let's go with the general manager? Yeah, general manager. And then please identify yourself, and then...
Good morning, Senators.
Good morning.
My name is Ervin Slake. I'm the general manager for the Guam Solid Waste Authority, and I've held this position since October of 2021. I'm here today to testify in support of Bill thirty thirty-eight. And I've submitted written testimony. And I'd just like to go through a slideshow and basically cover the points that I'm going to be covering in the written testimony. So, sorry about the tongue-in-cheek title, but we've been down to this road before. Next slide. So what we're going to cover is a little bit of the background, some of the island waste collection assumptions that we've made as a GSWA. Projected rates are going to be included, as well as comments on the specific bill. This is our crew that, you know, goes out three in the morning, collects refuse. Sometimes we miss you, but we always, you know, try to make up for that, and we're human, so it's a work in progress. The federal receivership set up the current program, which is a voluntary program. And the PUC's consultant, MSW, is going to confirm that...
If you could move closer to...
Yeah, the PUC's consultant, MSW, is going to confirm that the existing twenty-one thousand households that participate have been really steady over the entire length of time that we've been monitoring it. So that's been a constant number. The true number of households that could be serviced is around forty-one to forty-one thousand five hundred. So islandwide would basically spread those costs that we're currently incurring over roughly twice as many people that are currently taking advantage of that. We looked at the historical weight, next slide. The, where on an island, we have one disposal facility. That facility takes in a little under a hundred thousand tons per year. That puts the generation rate at about three point one pounds per person per day. The impact operationally, if we include the additional households, is not going to be significant. Because what's happening with that is, what's known in the industry as bin sharing, which is a form of theft of service. In other words, one or two families are sharing one bin and using it. The three pounds per person per day is low as compared to continental U.S., which is a little over five pounds per person per day. Next slide. So the reason it's important to GSWA is we have to build, close, maintain our disposal, as well as our collection facilities. This costs money. The bag of trash that's dropped off today and disposed of in a landfill, we're obligated legally, financially, and environmentally regulatory until the year 2100. And so those fees, we fully intend to collect through the operating life of the landfill, which is roughly seventy years from now. And so what we want to do is to make sure that that generation, when the landfill closes, is not impacted financially for its post-closure period. Next slide. As I've stated, if we do this, we will basically expand the customer base, but really not material their operation costs. Next slide. So this picture was actually two days after I landed on Guam, and I toured the statue. It's called Women's, Women of Guam. It's by the Alapang Hotel, right? And, you know, during my interview, they told me about illegal dumping and so on, and asked me to comment on plans for dealing with it. One of the obvious things would be if you provide something that's at that household that they could put their trash in every week, it'd be a lot easier than driving someplace and then throwing that trash on the side of the road or anyplace else. The other thing I noticed was, so this trash was all bagged, which either the people brought it to the beach, you know, and then bagged it up, but didn't take it back with them. So, or, you know, maybe they thought they were doing, you know, the beach a service, but really, all it did was it lessened the distance the rats had to go to find food. Next slide. So the rates that we're looking at right now, we've got submitted a bill to the PUC that we are proposing thirty-three dollars for next year for our existing twenty-one thousand households, thirty-five after that. With the island-wide collection, if that were to come to fruition, we would be able to offer twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per household per year. However, that twenty-two dollars and fifty cents is caveated with a way that we can find four million dollars to purchase twenty thousand, excuse me, forty thousand carts. The governor had given me, given the GSWA about ten million dollars to support island-wide collection. Four million of that was tied up in buying additional carts. When the island-wide bill was killed last year, we needed to spend that ARPAM money by December first of 2024, or else we would lose it. So that's why we bought additional equipment, additional trucks, so that we would not lose that four million. But now, if you want to do this, we need another source for four million. We've asked our consultants to look at what it would take within one year of operation to recoup that four million. And the numbers I got at 2:00 a.m. last night indicate that we would need to continue with the thirty-dollar rate, even though you passed island-wide, to try to recoup the four million and a year after. So it would be two years of thirty before we could lower that rate to everybody. Or you could find another source for the cart money. Next slide. And we just covered the carts, next slide. So the comments that we have are for the penalties for failure to subscribe. We would like to be the agency that understands who has not paid their bill or signed up, and that therefore, what's the language in the bill would indicate that they're not handling their waste properly. And so what we would do is use the existing regulatory structure and turn that customer's name and address over to GIPA to further, you know, investigate and/or penalize them for not disposing of their waste or handling their waste properly. The low-income customer assistance rate, we are not in favor of GSWA establishing that program. There is a program that's currently available to GSWA, as well as other utility agencies. It's called the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I just got numbers this morning. So in January, twenty-five of our existing customers took full advantage of the ERA program. In February, it was fourteen. So those are the facts about disadvantaged people using additional funds to pay for solid waste services. It's twenty-three in January, fourteen in February. We feel that the twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, if that was implemented, should not be a substantial burden on people, that the existing thirty dollars per month only burdens, again, twenty-three to fourteen people per month. And that concludes my testimony.
Thank you very much. Attorney Hiereki.
Good morning, Committee. Chairman Luhon, Senator Duñez, Senator Perez, Senator Terlahey, and Senator Taitegui. I am the chief administrative law judge of the PUC, and I'm presenting the testimony of our chairman, Jeffrey Johnson. Since this concept of universal garbage collection was introduced in the last legislature by Senator Perez, the PUC has supported that concept fully. And we commended her then and commend her now for introducing this, because this will be, as I'll point out, a benefit to the ratepayers of Guam. As far as the concept of universal trash collection, that originated with the audit of the PUC in 2020. So our consultants at that time had recommended universal garbage collection, and the PUC approved that. The establishment of such a plan will greatly assist the Guam Solid Waste Authority in meeting its financial obligations. It needs additional revenue, and this, of course, will provide a stable, ongoing source of revenue for GSWA. Right now, you're aware, there is a rate case pending before the Public Utilities Commission for solid waste. And Mr. Slake just pointed out the various increases that will be sought from thirty-three dollars, or to thirty-three dollars, from thirty and then to thirty-five dollars. But the great thing about universal coverage is that it will obviate the need for those increases. So, of course, if the senators support reducing rates to the ratepayers, they should be in support of this plan. Of course, it will affect a larger group, but overall, it will provide a good, stable, ongoing source of revenue, which GSWA definitely needs. The concept of universal trash collection is in accord with U.S. trash collection standards. In fact, there are very few solid waste authorities that don't have that now, that don't have universal service. So what this legislation tries to do is in accord with those standards. It's also in accord with utility standards. Right now, we have a one group, the ratepayers for solid waste, that are paying for the entire collection and the system. But those that aren't participating aren't helping. And since utility service is something that benefits all the citizens of Guam, the cost should be borne by everyone. So that comports with rate-setting principles, where the object is to avoid discrimination against certain sectors of the community. This will ensure that all people that receive the service will pay for the collection costs. So in that respect, universal garbage collection is just and reasonable, and it is equitable to charge everyone who benefits from the system. There is one area, though, we have concerns with in the bill, and that is Section 51A 1106A. And the PUC has always supported customer assistance programs. It's set up that program with the telecom companies. But the PUC always feels that all rate matters should be within its jurisdiction and purview, as is really guaranteed under the law. So what we think should happen here is that for a customer assistance plan, it should come to the PUC in the context of the rate case, and then the PUC would work with solid ways to establish such a system. But in this bill, the actual, like a program, is established by the legislature. In other words, the legislature is engaging in rate-setting itself, and then also setting the amount of the rate, which would be fifty percent of the rate charged for customers. Under the existing law, it's very clear that the legislature has delegated...
Attorney Hiereki? What number were you referring to? Five-one-one, what was that?
Uh, yes.
Five-one-one-six?
Section fifty-one A 1106A.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you. Sorry about that, thank you very much.
So, in this bill, the legislature itself would require the program and would establish the amounts. But if you look at the existing law, and the testimony of Chairman Johnson has cited that, that's ten GCA 51A 301B through E. All commercial and residential tipping fees charged by the authority shall be subject to the review and approval of the Public Utilities Commission. And then further, that a residential tipping fee, which may include collection charges and a self-drop fee, may be established, subject to the approval of the PUC. So the PUC has testified many times before the legislature. We believe that its independence and rate-setting should be preserved, and that's an Organic Act authority. Under the Organic Act, it's the PUC that is established as an independent rate-setting body. And the legislature itself has recognized, in Public Law 2618, that it recognizes the need to preserve a strong, independent Public Utilities Commission, which is independent of the executive and legislative branches. So with regard to fifty-one A 1106, I've been, there's included language in Dr. Johnson's testimony that would make that a recommendation by the legislature, but subject to the review and approval of the PUC. So in concluding, we strongly support the intent of the bill, and with those amendments, the PUC would fully support it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Attorney Hiereki. Mr. Sniklas.
Hoffa Day, Congressman, Senator Luhon, Senator Sabina Perez, Terlahey, Taitegui, and Duñez. On behalf of Guam EPA Administrator, Michelle Lastimosa, who is currently off-island, I'll be providing testimony on Bill thirty dash thirty-eight. The Guam Environmental Protection Agency supports Bill thirty dash thirty-eight relative to establishing Guam Solid Waste Authority's island-wide collection plan. Last year, Guam EPA received two-hundred-and-thirty-eight solid waste complaints concerning illegal dumping and household waste accumulation. About half of these complaints were related to household waste, household waste accumulation. Furthermore, eighty percent of Guam's EPA's emergency responses with Guam Fire Department were related to illegal dump fires on public and private properties with excess trash accumulation. On March sixteen, 2025, Guam EPA responded to a trash fire reported by the Guam Fire Department and found piles of trash bags, litter, and junk vehicles at a home with no trash service. The resident, a single mother of five, stated that they tried to take their trash to the transfer station, but do not have a truck or the... but do not have a truck or the means to transport their waste, and struggle financially. Unemployed and low-income families often prioritize other expenses over trash disposal, providing mandatory garbage collection services and provisions for low-income customers. Again, provisions for low-income customers will help reduce illegal dumping, trash accumulation, and burning of household waste, thus promoting a healthy and cleaner Guam. Danklunas sidus masi. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Duñez.
Sidus masi, Mr. Chairman, and it's really nice to have you all here this morning. Seems like very favorable testimony. Mr. Slake, I want to let you know that I really, really enjoyed you receiving the chairman and the committee to see your operation from beginning to end, I guess. Not beginning at the households, but the beginning in terms of what your team does. Mr. Hareki, a lot of us really should be proud of having this gentleman here. He's really, really, you know, the board members and the chair were mentioning that his experience and what he's done in his time that he's been here has really been extremely beneficial. I wanted you to share, which you shared with us basically, that one of the main, primary reasons, too, why you're able to do this, not only because of the economies of scale with, you know, the mandatory, but also that you've managed also funds that came from the settlement very well to outfit your operation.
Thank you for your kind words, and you're more than welcome to visit any of our facilities whenever you would like. And more than likely, I think my staff was-- should get kudos for the standing in for me, because I had to go off to something else. But what we're able to do, since I came here again in October of 2021, is to sort of relook at and reimagine a lot of the contracts that the receiver had set up and look for cost savings there. Again, the appropriation that the legislature did with the settlement monies from DOD really helped our finances. We were contributing about $2 million a year to the post-closure fund that was set up by court order. Since the fund is fully established with the proceeds from that settlement, we were able to use that $2 million to, you know, fund our capital program, pay for other things. So that's why you're seeing the savings in our rate model from that.
Excellent. I don't need my five minutes, Chairman. I only got one more question. EPA, thank you. That was very favorable testimony. We're glad to receive that. Fred, Mr. Hareki, so I just want to be clear, because I think the committee will have maybe no problem with implementing what you've asked for. So essentially, what you'd like us to do is amend that portion on the assistance to be a recommendation within the bill and that, and subject to PUC and the rate-setting regulations.
That's correct, Senator.
Okay. Hopefully, that would be-- I think that's the right thing to do. I don't think anybody is going to have, you know, any issues with regard to trying to help where we can. I don't want to make a slight here, but I want to, you know, kind of say what EPA said. Unfortunately, many households don't look at the priority of trash collection and disposal, waste disposal. But, you know, we see individuals that have no problem paying cell bills and other amenities that are very nice to have, but the necessity of, you know, disposal, I think getting that down to $22 is very, very, very going to be a nice thing, and I don't think that's unreasonable. One final question that I did have, Mr. Slake. Is there any opportunity to amortize that $4 million to realize those savings earlier, or?
One of the things that I've talked to GIPA about recently is the possibility of using some of the recycling loan fund or recycling fund for that. If the receivership ends, the receiver's holding about $6 million of GSWA money that they've used to pay for their operation and so on. So the concept would be, if this bill were to pass, and we needed the funds to purchase the carts and implement it as fast as we could, and we've engaged our attorney to look into the possibility of borrowing $4 million from the fund and then paying it back when the receivership ends. And that only has, I think, two more items to be sort of ticked off the list, and that could be accomplished. Hopefully, in my mind, a lot sooner than, you know-- it's been a while, so it's about time that ends as well.
Yeah, I was thinking then, maybe it doesn't need to be staying at the 30, but maybe you gradually bring it down, start at 27 or 26--
Again, the rates that I showed you were what we know right now. And if that comes to fruition and there's any future savings that we get, those will be passed on in rates. Yeah, it's been drilled into me since my 40 years in this business is that our business is somebody else's cost of business. So it's in my interest to make sure, especially when I operated on the continental U.S., there was no, there is no flow control. So customers who wanted to go to a cheaper landfill 100 miles away, they could do that. So we had to make sure our rates were attractive enough to keep the tonnage, to keep the program going, because the ones that I managed were just like this one. It's all based on user fees. So that's been ingrained in me. So whatever cost savings are in the future, those are going to be passed down.
Well, thank you, Mr. Slake. And, Mr. Chairman, let's try to get his title come to fruition and have second time be a charm. Thank you for all the good work that all of you do. Sidus masi.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Titegui.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair-- Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was going to say, Mr. Chair, if you want, she can go before me.
No, I think she wants to close, so, yeah.
Oh, go. Yeah.
Thank you. Senator Titegui.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if I may, can I ask Senator Turlahi? I just walked in-- and I'm just trying to catch up.
No, no problem. Senator July.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, all of you, and I'm glad to see you continue to support this bill. And very happy to see that the rate projection, the decrease in rates that are projected if this bill's implemented are still intact. If we could just clarify, so at solid waste, your projection was you're asking right now that rates go from 30 to 33 in fiscal year '25? And if this bill's passed, the rates would reduce to 2250? But the PUC said the same thing, the rates are going from 30 to 27 as opposed to 2250?
Sorry, that was the original, last year's--
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And yours are updated?
What we're doing now is we have an item before the PUC in April, I think, yes. And we need our base case approved. And so that will be going from $30 to $33 per household, and then the next year to 35. If the bill were to be passed, we would-- depending on how long it takes to get the additional carts and so on, we may end the timing of trying to bring in, again, 20, 21,000 customers and to distribute the bins in a sequential fashion, because we don't want to charge people when there's no bin there for them to use. So that has to be worked out. So it may very well be that you may pass the bill in 2025, but we may only be able to implement it soonest, would be January of 2026, which coincidentally would be the soonest we could implement the $3 increase.
Thank you. That makes sense. All right. And what about for the PUC? You're saying you should be able to set the low-income customer assistance rate. Do you think in setting that, that that would affect the projection of the 2250? Like, in other words, would the regular rates increase in order to cover that, or how have you seen that done?
What the PUC would do would be, of course, in the rate case, which is now pending and actually getting closer to being heard, we would work with solid waste on the program to see, you know, what elements they would want. But I don't-- I don't see that altering the $22 unless the rate was substantially changed.
Well, the $22 is if everybody participates.
Yes.
If you're asking us to fund a low-income program, just like we did with the previous bill, there would be two rates. One would be the reduced rate, and then the second would be-- I mean, one would be the normal rate, and then we would use those funds to subsidize an even lower rate. What we're advocating is that any assistance is not of our ratepayers to come up with. So it would be other funds. We do not really accept or would embrace the idea that, you know, time it for like federal funds or other sort of grant programs to fund it, because those are not-- those are not as consistent as the need for us to go out every week and pick up refuse. So we can't rely on the hope and probability of the federal government or somebody else coming up with those funds. The current program that I spoke about, Emergency Rental Assistance, that's currently a federal program. It's due to sunset at the end of this year. However, the people and logistics are all incorporated into DOA currently. And if, again, local funds were to be pushed into that program, they could continue with income assistance for all utilities, as well as the rental assistance that it currently provides for. And that's what we would advocate, a separate source of funds other than our users.
That sunsets at the end of, in December '25?
Correct.
All right. So I'm looking again-- so the previous bill was vetoed in May of 2024. And at that time, you had a promise or you had $10 million in ARP funds where you could have bought the carts?
Well, we had $10 million total, but the carts were $4 million of that. So that's what we basically-- you know, put the pedal to the metal to make sure that those didn't evaporate by December of 2024.
All right. And the objection to the bill last time was that there was no low-income rate?
Correct.
And that, all right. And it's too bad, because we could have come up with some kind of program, perhaps, between May and December, if for assistance, while we purchased the carts. I think it's too bad.
That, in a perfect world, that might have happened, but to deal with procurement, there literally was no time. In fact, a $500,000 truck waited till the last minute to get approval on, and we missed the opportunity to spend $500,000 that had to be basically returned. Or either that or it evaporated, but we were not able to use it.
All right. Well, I appreciate your continued work on this and your continued advocacy for lower rates for the ratepayers and consistency in this regard. If I could ask EPA, your testimony says-- well, gave one story about that it's not just abandoned vehicles that are these trash, that illegal dumping, you're talking about household trash, trash that should be covered by something like this. And then I just guess I just want to hear again from you. So is this a big problem? Or is it just few and far between where you see household trash is being dumped illegally?
It is a big problem. Household waste accumulation in homes. And it's often related to, you know, low-income families. Participants in the Trumoral Land Trust programs are a high population that also fits this description. And then whenever there's a grass fire on public lands during that course of the response, Guam EPA is also called to investigate because of large illegal dumping activity. And again, a lot of it is household waste.
Thank you. This bill, if I'm reading it correctly, does not make an exemption for if you take your own trash to the transfer facility and show a receipt, that you get exempt. Is that right?
No, no.
Oh, it does.
It will.
It does? It does?
Yeah, we have a mechanism that we worked out on the last bill to identify all the new customers. And if they choose to use any of our transfer stations, we would know who they were, and that would be allowed, as well as somebody that has a contract with a private company to pick their refuse up, that would be allowed as well.
Okay, yes. But your rates for those are also going up. Is that correct?
Yes, the-- in the slide that I showed, the transfer station rates, again, they were not adjusted for the past 10 years. So those need to cover the cost of the operation of the transfer stations, and that's what our current rate consultant has recommended. They're basically doubling.
From what to what?
If I--
Approximately.
Go back through here. So it goes from $7.50 to, I think, $11.55 for the half pickup? I have it. Sorry. Must have been another-- If it's not here, Senator, I can get that to you. But what I remember, everybody was talking about the $7.50--
Yes.
--for the half pickup. That goes to $11.55, and the other rates are commensurate with that.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. And again, thank you to the sponsor of this bill for pushing it again. It has been touted as the solution to illegal dumping for all of these household goods that are continuing to be a problem. And it's going to actually benefit the ratepayers as opposed to put an additional burden on them. So I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator July. Senator Titegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And good afternoon to you. I appreciate your taking the time to discuss this once again and try to weed out some of the concerns that were had. I think it's become a better bill, if you ask me, you know, to move forward on something like this. But, you know, it's not just, you know, the illegal dumping that, you know, that we're dealing with, but also individuals taking their trash and putting it in somebody else's dumpster that they pay for, you know, and getting away with that. So you're getting a lot of these people who come out and say, wait a minute, my trash is full. How did this happen? And people are dumping their, you know, doing what they call drive-by dumps, you know, for other people. So I think this would also eliminate some of that and some of the fights that come about on something like that happening. But it was brought up-- Senator Turlahi brought up, I was concerned, too, about the private haulers and the impact on private haulers. And they'll be subject to the same regulations and pricing standards as with GSWA, correct?
Yeah, we haven't-- we've recommended price increases for the commercial waste. But those are consistent with, you know, increasing the rates, yeah.
Regarding the implementation and compliance, how will GSWA track and enforce compliance with the mandatory subscription requirement?
As I alluded to very briefly, and thank you for the question. So there's three main ways that a customer will need to submit to GSWA under the bill to prove that they are handling their waste appropriately. One is obviously a subscription. The second would be-- The second would be their declaration that they wish to bring it to a transfer station. So we would identify that customer in our Alpine system, and the scale attendants at those transfer stations could then look them up and say that, yes, they are, they are a GSWA or a household that's able to use the facility. Somebody that's in an apartment building, for example, that wants to drop off a refrigerator or whatever, they would have to pay the fee for that appliance, but they are also free to use the transfer stations as well. Generally, those apartment buildings have their own commercial dumpsters, and trash from them is not really a major contributor, but usually the appliances or a bicycle or something like that, that's what they bring into us. Just like the old bill, the customer base, we're advocating using the GWA customer base so that they would automatically be rolled into our customer base to eliminate 21,000 to 21,000 households trying to get into our office and sign up for the service. So they would automatically be enrolled unless they were able to show a different method. As far as penalties, like I said earlier, what we would do is we would monitor who has not paid like over 90 days, and then we would, we would then turn to GIPA to look at their and say that they're not handling their waste appropriately. Either need to tell us that they want to haul, you know, to the transfer station and switch, which is perfectly acceptable, or they've contracted with a private company and have a dumpster at their house, that's fine. But they need to come up with a reason why they haven't used the facility, haven't paid for the curbside collection.
Yeah, that actually segues into my, you know, another question with the penalty structure. What in place for noncompliance? What have you, I mean, this is the second time this bill's come up, you know, I'm sure you talked about. So what kind of penalties are we looking at?
Sorry?
What kind of penalties are you looking at? Have you discussed this, like the amount?
For solid waste violations, it's up to $1,000 per day per violation. And if it's illegal dumping, littering on public or private property without the consent of the owner, then it's $200, and then up to 32 gallons and greater is up to $500. And I believe that's, we're looking at possibly amending that to go to increase. But just standard, it'll be accumulation of household waste, that's up to $1,000.
And those numbers have been looked at or have been, what is it, adjusted at all? When's the last time those numbers were adjusted?
For the solid waste, for Tenji Sei, Chapter 51, Article 1, it hasn't been adjusted for a long time. Article 2, the litter, has been adjusted a number of times in the past couple of years.
What about data privacy and sharing? What data protection measures will be in place for sharing GWA customer information with GSWA?
Sorry.
And also, just to reiterate, so you can finish it, can residents opt out of data sharing for privacy concerns?
Well, we've worked out a solution, I believe, with GWA, in that we're not asking them for the customer name, only the location and the address. And so that's who we would, you know, move over and then...
Just location?
Yeah.
Okay. That's good. Okay, other than that, I appreciate you being here again. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Senator Taddei. Senator Paris, want to close on your bill?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, but I just have a couple of questions before closing. So I just want to clarify regarding the LICA rate. In your testimony, Attorney Hareki, or at least in representation of Jeff Johnson, so are you open to a low-income customer assistance rate? Is that, is that something that, in your testimony, well, you provided some language to amend that part of the bill? So are you supportive of a low-income customer assistance rate?
As I mentioned, the PUC has before supported such rates with the telecom companies, and we work together with them to establish the lifeline rates. And of course, there's legislation to support that. I think what would happen here, you know, we work collaboratively with the utility. So the request for the program and the amount would have to come from the utility. But we would do that in the context of the rate case. We have a rate case now, so it would depend on the position of Guam Solid Waste Authority. But the commission has supported the concept, and even in testimony before, when the customer assistance plan has come before the legislature, we have supported the concept. We've raised issues sometimes about the amounts of the program, because basically that can work, well, it's a subsidy that the other rate classes may have to bear. So we always look at that, too. I mean, the amounts you could set for such assistance would have an impact on the general ratepaying class, and we're always sensitive not to want too much of a shift of that burden. But in general, we would kind of defer to the GSWA and work with them to establish that program if that's what they'd wish to do.
Okay. So I'm going to reiterate that question to General Manager Slike. So I think this, would you support a low-income customer assistance rate? Because we do have populations that are really, like in the testimony provided by Guam PA, there are those that are in the programs that get social welfare, right? So would you support that, the low-income customer assistance rate for those that are eligible for these other programs?
So what we've objected to is for the current ratepayers to subsidize that. But if that is the direction, then you need to realize that the $22 rate would need to go up to, like it did before, roughly 27. We have to really look at the, we didn't run those numbers, but it would be like a $27 rate, and then the lowest rate we would offer, and it could only be for a small segment. We couldn't offer it to anybody that wanted it. We could only support like 8,000, 5,000 to 8,000, I believe, is the number we ran the last bill. So those SNAP recipients, those would be the only people that we would offer, the $15 to $17, and everybody else would have to pay 27. So that's the numbers. And again, we haven't run the examples. What we did was, again, prepare the base case. We only became aware of the bill very recently, and then we asked our rate model people to look at if everybody participated, what would that rate be? So we would advocate that any assistance be looked at at other source of funds other than GSWA ratepayers.
Okay.
And again, I pointed out that, again, the current people that use the existing utility program, 23 in January and 14 in February, to cover a GSWA $30 per month bill.
Yeah, so, I mean, even at that, we're seeing a reduction for subscribers with, from 30 to 27. So I guess what I'm trying to do is, you know, really think about how we can, you know, implement this successfully, right? And, you know, would you be open to requesting a rate case like you did in the past where, what would the rates be with and without island-wide collection, but also add, what would the rates be with island-wide collection with or without the LICA rates?
So just to give you a briefing on GSWA's finances, I mean, we've been, if I could use the term blessed in an inappropriate way, but we were blessed with Mawar to be able to fund and keep the rates the way they are until now. We've been also blessed with some soil material that came in from the Dedado Transfer Station for EPA's headquarters. I don't see any of those in the future. And right now, frankly, the capital program, the equipment replacement program, those were identified as not being funded fully in 2020. They still aren't. That's why we need the $3 rate increase. We needed it last year, but we need it now. So for us to use the current rate model person and ask them to run the numbers again and go through this exercise, I'm not entirely supportive of that. If that's the direction that we need to go, then we will go that, but it's, we need, we need some assistance, and we need it quickly. The second thing, just to give you an understanding that your consternation about increasing rates, I used to work for the city of Winnipeg. If you Google the Winnipeg Free Press, they're losing their minds over a rate increase for garbage. The city set up a rate structure so that current users have to pay $93 per year for their trash collection. City's about a million or so residents right now. So that equates to $7 that the user paid. And the other balance, the $19 to $20, that was covered under taxes. The government now wants to move that all to the user payer. And so the user payer right now is with pitchforks protesting the same rate that we're talking about now. So, I mean, it's perspective. Nobody likes to pay for refuse. I've been in the business for 40 years. It's the last thing on everybody's mind. They love the things that they buy. However, after they use them, somebody else needs to take care of it, not me. So that's what we're facing. But we would really have to redo the structure to do what you're asking, which is a GSWA ratepayer subsidy for disadvantaged people.
All right. Thank you for the response. So this question, also regarding, in your presentation, General Manager, you mentioned that those that fail to subscribe, you would work with Guam PA to enforce. And I just wanted to see, you know, the response from Glenn here. What is, is this something that you feel you're capable of doing?
Currently, we take complaints from the mayors, village mayors, individuals and other enforcement agencies. I kind of have to remind them that they can also issue litter citations, but they refer to us for some reason, and we investigate the sites and we do our enforcement actions. And of course, we start with a notice of violation, which is also known as a written warning, allowing the individuals to do the right thing, to clean up the site, provide us receipts, and then it's a warning. Now, of course, if they don't do that, then it elevates to a notice of violation order of compliance where penalties start to be assessed. I think one of the, I think if we can figure this universal waste segment out and decrease illegal dumping, that may also help decrease our workload as well. So you kind of have to, you know, balance the funding. And I think there may be available funding that we're not looking at right now because it's earmarked elsewhere. But you kind of look at the waste and how it's generated and where it's coming from and how it's going into the island. And if there's any funding that addresses goods coming into the island, and those goods turn into solid waste, and it could be a viable source to help reduce costs for universal trash services.
If I may add to that thought, we currently offer payment plans for people that, you know, are having trouble paying their bills or they're overdue. So that would, that would still continue, and it would be a lesser amount than, you know, $33 or $30 per month. We've had customers, you know, that owe us at least, you know, like $200 to $300 in arrears that we've worked out payment plans for them.
Okay. Thank you for those responses and for your support on this bill. I just want to, you know, reiterate a quote from Margaret Mead, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. And so I just want to commend all of, all of the Guam Solid Waste, all of, you know, Board of Directors, all of you that have been through this, I guess, this tribulation of our waste being under receivership. So it's been almost 20 years. And so I feel that every improvement that has come in the past, let's say, the past since 2019, since you got out of partial receivership, you know, a lot of changes happen, and you've demonstrated time and time again that you are ready and on the verge of attaining full autonomy through all your expertise and collaboration. And I believe this measure is one such measure that will support that trajectory. You know, it's a huge milestone for Guam Solid Waste Authority and for Guam. And it's not just because you're doing these steps. What really matters is that, how are we going to manage our waste in the long term and protect the health of our environment and our people? I think that's what truly is at stake here. And this bill will promote financial stability, something that we, which we lacked and that which got us into this mess in the first place, I believe. And so we really need to support this measure as well as support, you know, those that need some assistance. And so I'll be looking to you to, you know, tailor this bill, improve this bill even further so that we can move on this trajectory. And I thank you, Mr. Chair, and my, the colleagues for their support, and I look forward to collaboration and support, further support on this measure. Stu Smase.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator Paris, and look forward to the collaboration as well and work on it, on the markup. Thank you very much. Just one question. Mr. Evan, what do you estimate the tonnage of illegal trash that we have right now? What is the estimate of what we have right now?
I don't, I don't believe I've ever calculated that. I did calculate, based on the tonnage that we receive from people that bring their refuse to the only secure disposal area in Guam is the Lejeune landfill, that it's roughly 3.2 pounds per person per day. Illegal dumping, I don't think is material in terms of quantity. I've heard, you know, people talk on the radio, because the receiver set up the system to handle 600 tons per day. And there was a comment that, well, obviously, you're only taking in about 300 to 350, that other 300 is going off and being disposed of illegally. And that cannot possibly be true, because you're, you would notice that. And I calculated just 30,000 tons per year. What that would mean, uncompacted, it would be over a million cubic yards. That's, that's huge. And it's not as if the people on Guam serotipusally go to different spots so you never notice it. Nobody, nobody's going to hike four miles into the jungle to drop something off so that nobody else sees it, and then do the same thing the next week in some other spot. It's just not going to happen.
No, no. If there's a bush there, they just throw it behind the bush, and it's very, very obvious when it's, when it's cleared up, somebody goes and bush cuts and everything, you see, you see there's a clearance that you'll see that, you know?
Well, Glenn knows that, Glenn knows that when you clean up one spot, it comes back.
Sure, no, absolutely. Sure, no, absolutely. And the reason why I ask this question is because I'm just wondering in regards to the tonnage that, what this bill would do in regards to, it won't go down to zero, but how much it would decrease universal trash, how much, how much it would decrease? What is your estimate?
Somebody, again, at the, the last bill, somebody had advocated that this will not help illegal dumping. Illegal dumping is mainly appliances. And then I made the comment that I've been on the island for three years and I've never noticed a skinny pig. They were eating something. So what it would do is we would be by that household every week and the customer would need to figure out, is it worthwhile to put these bags in my car or truck and drive someplace in the middle of the night or, you know, and then throw it out or put it into the bin that's right by my house? That's, I think, the logic of what we're trying to do with the quote-unquote illegal dumping. I will, I will say, like I did the last bill, I was, I've managed landfills and programs that were free to use, absolutely free. All you had to do was go there, put your waste, it was taken away, no charge. We still had illegal dumps. So it's, it's a human sort of condition, I think. But this will help because again, they have to figure out, do I want to use the container that's right here or do I want to take the time and avoid penalties and throw it someplace else?
You also said, actually, when we, we took a tour, and I want to thank you and your team for taking us on the island-wide tour on, on the facilities that you guys manage and likewise, that is managed by the private sector that we have a public-private partnership with. But you also said that you were looking, you guys were looking into switching off the containers that we're using right now because of the, the, you know, the, the plastic, that was just too hard for, I mean, it was just, the elements out here is just too harsh for them that, that down the line, you're looking at replacing them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our capital program, we would look at bin replacement program so that...
Yeah, your trash bin, yeah.
Yeah. So that we know when we purchase them and we know when they degrade and it, right, right now, we go out and we fix wheels or anything that's, or lids that go bad. What we want to do is get ahead of that and then really understand how old they, they are and where they're located and then replace them before they totally deteriorate. So you're not spending a lot of time and effort running around replacing wheels, lids, et cetera.
Okay. So, so you're not replacing the concept, basically? I mean, you know...
There, there is no sort of...
There is no, okay.
No.
No, the reason why I asked is because I was just wondering if, if that was going to be replaced with something else, a different kind of material, whether or not the infrastructures there, the trucks and things like that, you'd be able to handle that?
Well, yeah, I, I think I've said this to my board and Senator Fares, so the 95-gallon container that we're currently using in the industry is really large. I mean, most places now use a 64-gallon drum. And if you do that weekly collection and offer the same-day collection of recycling, those two bins handle the typical waste stream adequately. We do have customers now that actually want two 95-gallon drums or bins and we would, we would continue with that. If somebody wants extra bins and willing to pay the extra fee for that, fine, we'll pick up two instead of one. But generally, people can get by with a smaller bin size.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I want to thank the panel, my colleagues for being here as well today. This will conclude this morning or today's public hearings on, on bills, of course, 6738, it was heard earlier, and this bill now, 30-38COR. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on these bills within seven days from today, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Jesse A. Luhon, as chairman of the committee, and mailed to 163 West Chalan Santo Papa in Hagatne, Guam, 96910. We also send testimonies to senator.luhon@guamlegislature.gov. This morning's public hearing is now adjourned and the time is 12:35. Thank you very much.